Well, I figure people will probably stream in when they can. I am running the meeting tonight. Unfortunately, Bob is really not feeling well. He is bedridden. So hopefully, he'll be able to join us on Thursday. And he's up to speed. He's read everything. And we'll take it from there. So thank you all for coming. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, one item on the agenda tonight. We're going to cover the fields. And I'm going to turn it over to Chris in a second. I just wanted to start off by saying, you know, on behalf of Board and the Administration, we wanted to sincerely thank the Fields Committee. I think we gave you an impossible task in an infinitesimal amount of time. And it's incredible, the report that you did and all the work that you guys put in. So, to start, thank you so much for all this work. And we're really hoping that this helps the community, the Board, the Administration, and everyone make the decision easier. So, thank you. That said, I'm going to turn it over to Chris and take it away.
Good, good. Well, thank you, Robyn, and welcome, everyone. And it's nice to see some new faces in the audience tonight. As Robyn indicated, the committee was really charged with a large, large task, and one that they took extremely seriously. And looking at, from where we moved from back in the middle of January, when we were having conversation about this initiative, to establishing a charge for a committee, recruiting community members to participate on the committee, and then thinking of the scope of work that was before them, it was an amazing mountain to climb in a short period of time. And I have to say, as a community, as a school district, the Board of Education, we could not identify a better group of people that took every single meeting very, very seriously, and put in over 20 hours worth of meeting time within a three-week window, reviewing countless documents outside of those meetings, performing research, sharing expertise, and, as Robyn indicated, really put together an outstanding, outstanding document that will guide the thinking and decision-making of the Board of Education over the next couple of weeks. In doing so, we started with a group of 11. Unfortunately, one person had to drop along the way because of professional commitments. But I certainly wanted to read on record the names of the individuals that were involved in the committee, and gave really their heart, minds, and soul, and put their personal lives and families on hold for this important work. And they were folks that came from all walks of life, people that have a variety of experiences that really enriched the process, from individuals that were involved in engineering professionals, construction business, to having environmental expertise, having served on countless, folks that have served on countless community boards, advisory boards, Board of Trustees for the village, and folks that had participated in this process for the school district in the past, people with knowledge of athletic programs in the community and in the school district. A really dedicated group. So I certainly just want to acknowledge each of those folks. Ann Atkinson, Sean Brady, Michael Jory, Michael Hannah, Deb Hargraves, Michael Havraniac, Tom Jackson, Andrew Kochen, Linda Pierpont, Rick Rizzolo, and Esther Samra. And also to acknowledge Deb Hargraves and Rick Rizzolo for chairing the committee in organizing, preparing meetings, agendas. To thank Michael Hannah for typing the minutes for each and every meeting. It was really a team effort, and we couldn't have ended up where we are today had it not been from the leadership of the group. And I speak of collective leadership. So, really, thank you for everything. So as we headed into this process back in January, we established a charge for the committee. And they were to look at a series of five different items. And in doing so, Rick is going to kind of walk us through those five different points and delve into some of the thinking, some of the research that the committee formulated. And certainly, we'll be open to a conversation and questions and discussion. And certainly, I think the Board could chime in as necessary. But then at the end, of course, we're going to open up for public comment and question as well. So with...
Can I say one quick thing now to everyone? And just to take a step back at the big picture, as we as Board had talked about earlier at a meeting, for this referendum, we're looking at the fields, but we're also looking at a facilities component for a variety of reasons. Partly because the facilities are in dire need and the work has been put off for so many years due to the budget. And also because, as Deb had told us, if you do the field project in conjunction with the facilities, it becomes aidable, and you do get some, a significant amount of money back from the state, which makes it all makes a lot of sense. However, for the purposes of the meeting tonight, we're really going to focus on the fields. And Maria and Phil had also put in an incredible amount of time, and they took the charge, they took the lead on the facilities piece. And they will be presenting to this field, our meeting on Thursday, the 13th, their findings. We felt like to do it all in one night would be a little overwhelming. So, just from the big picture, there will be the two pieces that we'll be bringing together and making a decision on on the 20th. So hopefully, everyone can be part of all the meetings. I just wanted to be clear with that.
No, there you go.
So, sorry with that. Now, ready to move forward. And with that said, I'm going to, I guess, turn it over to Rick. Thanks.
Okay. Members of the Board, members of the Administration, ladies and gentlemen, what we're going to do tonight is to give you a PowerPoint presentation, which is a synopsis of the entire package that we gave to the Board. The document, the Board, the report that went to the Board is available online now. I believe this presentation will be online tomorrow after it's given. However, this is a more condensed look of what we did. There's a whole lot more information in the Board report than there is here. But I'm sure there's enough here to generate a whole host of questions. As Dr. Harrison said, we were convened on January 22nd. There was 11 members initially. The names of the members there are there, with Michael Havraniac resigning due to a work conflict. He was out of the country and couldn't join us for most of the meetings. What you'll see there is there were a total of 20 hours of committee time, but countless hours of going to drop boxes and looking at all documents from experts around the country that we used to help us make our decision. What we decided initially was that we were going to have a, we didn't want to have just a simple majority govern or speak to what it is we wanted to do. So at the time when we had 11 members, we had a majority-plus vote required, and there were seven votes at that time. Unfortunately, when we lost Michael Havraniac, we had to go back to a simple majority. What we were charged to do, as Dr. Harrison alluded to earlier, there were essentially five major questions that we had to look at and speak to. The Board gave us a baseline of what they thought we should do as a baseline. You know, we had to go and perform the necessary research and draft this presentation to try to encapsulate what it is that we wanted to do. The questions and the conclusions section begin now. First question was, and the major question was, should artificial turf be considered? The East Field, on the East Field, it was, we were asked, should it remain as a grass field? Should it become a turf field? And are there any other considerations for a turf field? We'll get into that in a little while, as far as the other considerations. But what we voted for, what you see on the committee response, the unanimous vote, was should an artificial turf be considered for the East Field? And we unanimously agreed that it should not. There were a number of reasons. Rather than artificial turf, it was in the best interest of students, the community, and the neighbors, which is an important consideration, or at least we felt it was an important consideration. Mazeros Field was the second charge. The charge there was, should we consider an artificial turf to better meet the needs of the school programs and the community? As you'll see later in the report, we're going to give you an idea of exactly what happens on all of our fields. And it was quite an eye-opener for us. But we felt, because of the usage and several other factors, that a majority of seven to three voted that it should be an artificial turf field. Once again, we'll get into the reasons why a little bit later on in the presentation. Question number three was, should the addition of lights be considered for any of our fields? We voted nine to one against, but we did recommend, or ask that we, that the Board considers, if in fact, lights were ever to be used in the future, if they were to be housed within the confines of Mazeros Field, that in fact, the infrastructure should be done now. Meaning, we don't want to, you know, dig up the turf, you know, down the line. I personally think that if we were ever going to do lights at that field, that it would be outside the perimeter of the field anyway. You know, they have to be a little bit further away from the field. So, at this point, we're looking at not doing the lights now, unless, of course, we would recommend that the infrastructure, the conduits be put into the ground now, if in fact, it was ever going to be a possibility in the future. Question number four was, should the replacement of OliTrak mirror the existing, or should we consider alterations? The unanimous vote was to replace as-is. However, you'll see a little bit later on in the presentation, there are certain minor changes that we recommend because of the fact that it's going to be a turf field. And we want to make sure that the turf field, we do this the right the first time, that the, there's a playable, as far as Section 1 is concerned, a playable lacrosse and soccer field, which is much wider than a football field. So, if we're going to put a turf field there, we want to make sure we put the lines in the right place right from the start, to make sure that we can, we can have, you know, section events and legitimate contests during the course of the season. And if for some reason we were to get into the sections, we could actually host a sectional game on our field if the lines were simply made from here and out to here. It will require moving something. We'll get to that a little bit later on. It's not a big deal. And the fifth charge was, are there any other athletic facilities or improvements that should be considered? And the short answer is yes. There's a more comprehensive list of things a little bit later on in the presentation. But some of the, some of the major ones, as I said earlier, just a moment ago, widen the delineated playing field striping of Mazeros Field. We didn't want to say widen the field, because we don't want you to think that the field is actually being widened. It's just the lines that are going to be widened. And we're showing in one of our slides, the field widening and the buffer around the field is the dotted line. Some of the things we should consider, adding more bleachers on the home side of the field. These are not in any particular order, by the way. And other minor considerations, certain athletic equipment, outsourcing maintenance. We'll get into that a little bit deeper, a little bit later on, when we talk about East Field, and, you know, what we propose to do there. So in conclusion, the committee has investigated the potential enhancements to the established baseline. That was really our main charge, is to take the baseline that the Board gave us and do our research and our due diligence to make sure that what we're going to recommend is not only doable, but in the best interest of the programs, the community, and our We, you know, prepared this PowerPoint presentation. And what we'd like to do is respectfully ask the Board of Ed to consider this report when making a determination of the final scope of the athletic facilities for inclusion in the Apostle bond referendum. Okay. To go beyond the five charges that we were asked, we want to give you some breakdown of our due diligence and what we've, what we took in, what we had to consider. And that's what the further response is all about. Basic questions that we had when we were examining the fields included, what type of sports are played on fields and by our students and our community members? How many athletes in each sport? Which fields can support these sports? And that's important, because the East Field, no matter how you lay out the East Field, it's not big enough to house a full-size lacrosse or a full-size soccer. So, we have to do that somewhere, and that's why we're recommending to do it at Mazeros. How often are the fields used? And my coach here, Deb, is going to go through a chart when we get to it, that gives you a real in-depth look at our use. And it's pretty awe-inspiring, the amount of sporting events and practices, and the amount of students and community members that actually use these fields. What seasons are they played? When do the fields rest? Very important factor when it comes to natural turf fields. What conditions are the fields in, and how could they be maintained for optimal use? And does local weather affect playing conditions? That one kind of answers itself. Analysis of fields, four key factors. What our inventory of fields are, what we have in both our district and in the village, and what our student-athletes use in their particular sport. Fortunately, we have a great relationship with the Village of Irvington when it comes to reciprocal agreement. You know, they use a lot of our facilities in the winter, and we use their facilities in the spring and the fall. So, it's quite a nice rapprochement that Artie and Joe Arcino from the village have. And it's, we're very, very happy and fortunate that this is the case. It wasn't always the case. The size and type and conditions of the fields, the intensity of the use, huge factor in our decisions. And not, last but not least, field maintenance. Because there's, what you'll find at the end of the, by the time we get to the end of the presentation, you'll find that one of the, the major thing that the committee really wanted to emphasize in this, in this report is field maintenance. We envision the fields as a system. Every field is part of the system. If you affect one part of, one field, it affects the whole system. And that's really what we've been, what one of our problems have been lately, is the fact that, you know, we haven't had East Field for so long. It's, I don't know, I know very few people who even remember being up there for practices. It's been so long. But now that we're going to put it back into use, we'll be able to, or we want the Board and whoever is in charge of the field maintenance to be cognizant of the fact that we need to rest these fields from time to time. And just because we're looking at East Field and Mazeros, doesn't mean that Dow's Lane Upper, the upper Dow's Lane, which is probably the third most critical field in our, in our list of fields, is equally as important. So, when we're doing what we're doing going forward, we need to look back and say, we need to also maintain these other fields. This gets to what I was just saying. The committee concluded and emphasizes that the district fields are interrelated and cannot be individually reviewed or analyzed without looking at them together as a system. Very, very important, as far as we're all concerned. The inventory is as such. Mazeros, right now, it's a natural grass field located on the campus. East Field, we'll talk more about East Field and Upper Dow's. As I said, Upper Dow's, natural grass field in poor condition due to the overuse since the closure of the East Field. So, going forward after, even after the referendum, we have to really look at taking care of the rest of our fields. Then we have Lower Dow's, which is a natural grass field in fair condition. And then we have two miscellaneous fields, and frankly, I've been in this town for 27 years and didn't know Lower Dow's existed. So... Main Street School, I know, because, you know, with T-ball and coaching T-ball all these years, and, you know, the lower ages of softball, it was a field that I, you know, would get my team to practice on, but you certainly couldn't use it as a, as a competition field. It's just in need of some serious, some serious work. Once again, part of the field inventory gives you an idea of the size of the fields. Most people would not think East Field is bigger than, if you say East Field is bigger than Mazeros, how come we can't put a legitimate soccer or lacrosse field on it? It's the way the field is positioned. It's just, it's not a, it's not a rectangle or a square. It's, you know, it's a bunch of different shapes.
It's kind of a rhombus.
Yeah. Close enough.
Yeah.
Okay. And once again, those are the sizes of the fields on the rest of the inventory. Mazeros? At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over. I'm going to go through this cell, and then I'm going to turn the meeting over to Deb Hargraves, who, if you look through your report, put together an incredible field usage chart for the fall and for the spring. And frankly, this probably took as much in hours to put together as the amount of time that we all met, you know, as a group. So it's, I can't, you know, thank Deb enough for putting it together. This was a, I don't want to say an obsession, but you kind of... It was certainly, it's certainly paramount in our decision to go with a turf field. And when you see the chart and really go and take you through the chart, it's obvious why we had to do this and why it was so important. Once again, on average, from 8:30 to 3:00, our students are using Mazeros for gym. That's one thing that really was never taken into consideration, the amount of hours that our students are on Mazeros. Now, granted, it's not, they're not going to put the wear and tear like the football team or the lacrosse team does. However, there is wear, there is, there are people on that field six hours a day, and it needs to be addressed as such. Student-athletes began using Mazeros and East Fields two weeks before the start of the school year for approximately four hours a day for preseason training. One of the nice things, if we go with a natural East Field and a artificial turf Mazeros, is that the teams that practice in August don't necessarily have to use Mazeros for their practice, because they can use, they can use East Field. They do a couple of practices a day, and usually, it's early morning or late afternoon. Everybody, everybody, there's a lot of people that are very concerned over the use of artificial fields in the heat of the, heat of the summer. And frankly, Artie tells us, it's never, never been an issue as far as the not being able to have a practice on natural turf fields. And when it comes to artificial turf fields, like I said, the main focus that we would have would be the football field in August, or football players in August. And in fact, if East Field was a natural turf field, that issue would be a baby. On weekends, both Saturday and Sunday, Mazeros is used primarily as a game field from 8:30 to 6:00. Dow's Lane Field are also scheduled for use. So there's, there's quite a bit of usage on the weekends by our student-athletes, but also by the community, whether it be ASO. At this point, there's too much color for me, so I'm going to pass it over to Deb.
Hi, Robyn. Good evening. What you're looking at, I just want to explain what we put together. And again, this is a document that we generated at the committee. But before I go through it, I do want to thank Artie McCormick, who suffered through my OCD in putting this together, as well as Joe Arcino, Linda Starpolly for Irvington Youth Lacrosse, and David Rose for our Irvington Youth Soccer. And what we did is we sent out a bunch of emails, had a whole bunch of conversations, and we asked everybody, oh, Joe, you are here. Joe, thank you. We sent out a whole bunch of emails, and we asked those who are in charge of sports in Irvington to give us the numbers, and let's look at the total package, and let's see which of our kids are playing which sports on which fields. And so what we did is we looked at Mazeros, East Field, Dow's Lane Upper, and Dow's Lane Lower. And those are our four school district fields. Then we also added in our two village fields, because we rely on them as part of, for our student-athletes. And that's Memorial, as well as Sina Cutson. And then we looked at the fields and how they were used during the course of the week, and we broke it down for weekday and weekend, because the usage is actually very different on weekdays versus weekend. We knew for a fact on Mazeros, Upper Dow's, and Lower Dow's, that the fields are used after school, basically, from 3:30 to 6 o'clock. And on average, Mazeros, you can see, is used as a practice field for 3.5 hours, as is, again, Lower and Upper Dow's. And we took a look at which of our athletes are on those fields after school during the week. And you can see from Mazeros, for example, in the fall, that we have our soccer athletes, and we have our cross-country athletes, as well as we're going to have football on the field. When East Field was open, and again, this reflects when we actually had East Field available to us, when East Field is open, you can see that the football team was practicing there for 3.5 hours. One of the challenges of Artie's job, as you can imagine, is that if it rains or there's a game, you can't necessarily have a practice. So, a lot of this information was difficult to assess, because you couldn't pin down, for example, that there is definitely a practice on a Monday. But what we do know is that the field is programmable on these days, and it is in use. So whether it's a practice or if it was a game, we know that that's, that's the time that the teams are scheduled to be there, and we know that we don't have a field that's not being used. But this is our best representation as to which sports are at which field during the course of the seven days. Now, we also looked at, on the weekends, when is the field used as a game field? Because we know that on practice, we have our own athletes out there practicing. But when it's a game, we also have an opponent. So there's heavier usage on the field. So the game fields are highlighted in yellow, and we put them times two on it to represent, of course, that we have not only our own 41 athletes, but we also have the adversary. So when you're thinking of terms of usage, keep that in mind. And as a quick, you know, look at the chart, you can see that every one of our fields is used every day, including Saturday and Sunday. And just for fun, of course, we had to throw in when we have our community teams on our fields as well, because we know that Irvington Recreation Department has a youth football league. So we know that we have somewhere between 50 to 60 kids playing community football. We also know that we have the ASO's kids playing on the weekends, primarily at Upper and Lower Dow's. And one of the things I just want to draw to your attention is, you can see how much our fields are used at Upper and Lower Dow's for ASO soccer. We have, on average, 100 children practicing at Upper and Lower Dow's on a Saturday and a Sunday. So we have over 200 athletes that are participating and playing. So there's, there is, needless to say, an intense usage, and there's a daily usage. And if you can just quickly, and I'll turn it back to you, I just want to show you a spring as well. If you could go, this is just field. So, when you're looking at our chart, this is the second chart. It's the spring season. And again, we relied on the 13 weeks in the fall and 13 weeks in the spring. And you can see Mazeros Field, for example, in the spring is primarily used for track and field and for lacrosse. At East Field, when it was open, that was a lacrosse field for practice primarily. And at Upper Dow's, we have, again, the lacrosse, and as well as we add rec ball and softball. And again, the yellow indicates when we have games, so we multiply it by two. And that really, for us, we thought showed not only how many athletes, and, you know, one of the nice things I saw was that thanks to our youth sports programs in Irvington, we have hundreds of children before they even reach modified and JV and varsity sports participating on the weekends. And if you take a minute, when you have the time, you can see the correlation between how many children we have in Irvington youth sports at a young age, and how that translates by the time they get up to the middle school and high school. We keep those numbers. This is a community that actually loves soccer, that we love lacrosse based on numbers, and we have a lot of participation in the JV and varsity level. So that gives you an overview. I hope it's clear. It was, in our opinion, it really also showed you quickly where you could see which are game fields again, and keep in mind that that's intense usage. Any questions before we turn it back? Got it? Okay. Thank you.
Does that kind of have a question? Sorry. I'm just curious, currently, are we looking into what officially goes on on the fields in the summer?
No, but I know that Joe Arcino had told us that we do have the summer camp that is, that uses Upper and Lower Dow's. And I can't remember what else. Was it baseball?
Official sports, right?
Yeah, just Lower Dow's for day camp. But on, but for the other fields, as far as I could remember, there was limited use, and, you know, our season did stretch sometimes until June passed the 13 weeks. But that was when we were told by the custodial staff that that was when the fields were rested, and frankly...
Typically, once the, our athletic teams are over in the school, we close the fields to begin some summer training.
And that is the primary rest period, other than obviously, poor weather when there's snow on the ground.
Can I just ask, when, cross-country actually uses Mazeros Field?
It does, actually.
You know, just go and run in the woods or something?
Yeah. I mean, again, it's, if you're looking at in the fall... Yeah, I mean, again, if you're looking at in the fall, for example, can we go back to that? We reflect that there's 60 athletes on the field. Keep in mind, though, it's the same time that soccer's using the field. So the fields are shared. So when you look at the Mazeros in the fall for 3.5 hours, the varsity boys JV, excuse me, soccer, varsity, and JV boys are on Mazeros, as well as the girls JV and varsity are on Mazeros, as well as track and field. So it's not necessarily to imply that 60 athletes are using that field from track and field as intensely as the soccer players, but they are there.
I was asking cross-country, not track.
Sorry?
Cross-country, not track.
60 athletes?
Yeah, and what are they doing on the field?
Meaning that that's the field they're assigned to for that time period, but it's shared with soccer. So whether they're in the corner or not, that's the field that they're assigned to.
Well, if they're assigned to it, doesn't mean they're using it, does it? Or does it?
Well, for practices, they will. I think from a competition standpoint, obviously, cross-country is going to be up through the woods, but for their practices, I believe they do.
They just stay on the field?
Yeah, so cross-country will use the track. They will actually start...
Track, not the field, okay.
They will actually, the last couple of years, we've used the field to start. If you know cross-country, they start a big block wide, starting like a run across the field to the puddle in the woods and they go.
They start in Mazeros or east?
So because of, you know, we've been recently, we've actually started on Mazeros Field to make more respective exports. So we start them lined up on the end zone, run them across the field, and then off into the trails they would go. They would use through eastfield, up through the lollipop trails that the village has used, and then back down and finish on Mazeros Field.
Okay. But that's the actual meets. And the practice, do they actually practice by running around the track?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe we ought to just keep in mind there's a difference between using the track and using the field, I guess, right?
We could do that. I mean, we could certainly...
You don't need to put artificial turf. Doesn't mean you do with artificial turf or natural turf because on track.
I agree. Again, I guess the only thing we're trying to emphasize, which is true, is how many athletes could potentially be on that field at that time after school, whether it's an intense use or a little walk across the field for track and field. It's still important to recognize that it's an important component to the whole system and where they're assigned to.
When you say ASO is actually a club team, or are club teams being a different?
It's funny you should ask because it was definitely another piece that made it difficult. It does include, within Irvington Youth Soccer, the soccer league. It does include ASO travel, which is known as FLEX. Now, it's changed names several times, but there's another club team that actually uses upper and lower dowels, which is yet again, a different day of the week that we didn't even capture in the field because we tried to be conservative, but there's potentially more usage than is reflected. So it's one club team, but not both of them.
Is that usage basically governed by capacity and that, you know, we take applications for who wants to use the fields and we see if we have room for them? And then it's...
It's a puzzle that we try to fit together. And whether it's community programs, the rec programs, or the school programs, we schedule the school programs with the first priority, and if there is opportunity, we'll allow the rec programs to utilize the fields as well.
One thing I also wanted to point out, when you're looking at the game field at Mazeros, also using the track, is we show varsity track and field, 80 athletes times two, when in fact, there can be a quad meet. There are times where they have three or four teams, especially, you know, when you look at the Razzbeck relays and things like that, there's more than what we're showing here. What Deb talked about was that these are pretty much, you know, minimums or what we feel are the norm when it comes to participation. Okay, so eastfield, natural grass factors, the location and size of the field, it's out of sight, it's limited on use due to the size and the condition. Reason we say it's out of sight, one of the things that we are concerned about is if we were to put an artificial turf field, we want to make sure that it's going to be protected. The fact that the eastfield is way up there, there's, you know, other than cameras and it's, you know, that's your only means of protecting it essentially, especially from motorbikes out in the back up in the woods. Once again, eastfield, primarily a practice field, not a game field. The field is not used for PE or recess, it's just too far away. By the time the students got up there, they'd have about 20 minutes to participate in whatever it is the PE instructors wanted them to do, and then they'd be 10 minutes back. So there's not a whole lot of time to use that for PE or recess. Other considerations, preserve natural green space, protect the natural setting and surroundings. Also, the proximity to field point residents, we believe the residents would prefer a natural grass field than a turf field. There's some considerations for drainage and things like that that some people think are worse when it comes to an artificial turf and better when it comes to natural turf. And there's different arguments for that whole scenario. Youth sports can still be played in the field with the fields being lined up there. Stormwater drainage will be enhanced with renovations. And the current plan that we have recommended, that we go with, there was several plans that of remediating the problems that they have up there. The one we chose does not require cutting down any trees. Eastfield conclusion, we think it should remain a grass field. We're going to recommend to the board that it does. Once again, it's in the best interest of the students, community, and the neighbors. Incidentally, I just, I don't think anywhere in the report or in the PowerPoint presentation does it say that at one point, we were going to have to remediate the problem we have with eastfield by capping it with two feet of either soil or rock or a combination of both, obviously. Fortunately, during our process of putting this report together, the school met with New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and, I believe, the Board of Health, and they have looked at all of the test data that Land Associates and the school system brought to them, and have come to the conclusion that we can get away with just one foot of a cap on there. So it saved us probably between $400,000 and $500,000, and that's why, part of the reason why we're recommending what we're recommending for the whole package as far as cost goes. Dr. Harrison is going to be going through the financial part of this once I'm done with the overall presentation. Mazeros Field, current factors, it's used for school and community events. It is used four seasons, but not a lot in, you know, during winter, the dead of winter or the height of summer, and obviously, it's weather permitting at the moment. It's limited resting, once again, November, February, July, 1 to August. Previous studies by Land of the surface and the drainage are available. All right. Mazeros Field considerations, we met with two vendors, two artificial turf vendors, and essentially, they showed us, and there are copies or samples of those, there's actually four, there's three there, but there's actually four different turf samples back there. The artificial turf with crumb rubber infill was pretty much dismissed out of hand by the committee, just because there's better ways to do it. Artificial turf with a combination of crumb rubber and organic infill was another choice, and then artificial turf with organic infill was the third choice. So from left to right, from right to left, actually, over there, the organic infill is shown, it's a field, what's the, what's, DO turf, okay, right.
What does infill mean?
It's what, there's a rug with the grass fibers coming out of it. In order to support that, there's an infill. There's either crumb rubber or organic material that's put in there to...
Underneath, underneath the rug?
No, in the rug. You'll see when you go back there, if you get a chance later on, you can go back there and see what the infill, and actually, we'll, I'm not sure if there's a cell of what it actually is. It's actually a rug with fibers coming up out of it, and then you fill it with either crumb rubber or an organic infill or a combination of both. That's what we talk about when we talk about...
It sits on top of something, but it's kind of exposed.
Yep, it allows the water to drain through. The rug itself allows the water to drain through. We compared artificial turf and natural grass as examined. We looked at the environmental and safety issues, the cost analysis of various sports fields, and the wear and durability and maintenance of the field surfaces. Certain assumptions were made based on those documents, consultants, and the discussions we had. In sum, natural grass surrounded by trees is nature's best setting for our children. However, when usage and limitations of our fields are considered, a natural grass turf Mazeros is not viewed by a majority of the committee as feasible. Ole Track, the committee was informed that the track was reached, has reached the end of its life. The actual rubber surface is very thin and the asphalt, underneath the asphalt surface is actually in need of repair as well. We recommended was the rubber surface on the top, and there's several choices or several different types of the rubber surfaces that's in the back. We don't have to, the asphalt base is to remain, but the actual top, if you ever watched how they put asphalt on a road, they actually grind out an inch or two of the top, and then they put a new surface down. That's exactly what will happen on the asphalt surface of the track. And then the rubber surface will be put back on top of it. We have made a recommendation of what grade of surface that they should use, but for bidding purposes, we would prefer to describe it as a mid-grade IAAF certified synthetic all-weather impermeable system. But there are, you know, your engineers know what we thought was the ideal surface, and they can make that representation to you. Okay, when we get to other improvements, as we said earlier, if we were to widen the delineated playing field surface at Mazeros, unfortunately, the 206-foot runway for the triple jump and I believe the pole vault will have to be moved because that area will be taken up by the wider fields. Artie tells us that the runway that is required for that is 206 feet. The actual space behind the southernmost goalpost is 210 feet, so it will fit there. The only thing that they'll have to go up to, perhaps the eastfield, to do is shot putt and javelin throw. I don't think we want a javelin sticking into our... Yes, it's actually, this will require relocating, not removing. I actually have that on my notes. So yeah, we'll be relocating it, that's okay. Also, so lacrosse and soccer can continue to have their practices while the track team is running around the field, what we recommend is that, we're calling them lacrosse nets, but they're protective nets in the end zones. So any ball, whether it be a soccer ball or a lacrosse ball, gets past the goalie or, you know, goes at a high rate of speed past the goalie. We want to make sure that the person running a track and field event is not going to be hit by the ball. So we recommend that they put the nets up in the end zones. If Mazeros was to become an artificial turf field, we were adamant about the fact that the field must be protected. Fencing, appropriate fencing, security cameras, proper signage posted with rules and regulations should be considered. We have a few different signs with different regulations or different types of things that you don't want to have on your artificial turf field, like gum and things like that. So we want to make sure that it's properly posted, the signage is properly posted. Once again, consider purchasing additional bleachers on the home side of Mazeros. That's just a general recommendation. We know that, you know, at some of our events, it's, you know, people are standing more than they're sitting on that side, which for some, that's what they want to do, but we just wanted you to consider it. Once again, the proper use of the tower should be explored, including using it to store maintenance equipment. There are a couple of pieces of equipment that are different in the upkeep and maintenance of a natural turf, a artificial turf field. And that's different types of things that you can either pull with a cart or, you know, pull with your hand to, and basically, it's to turn over the infill to try to keep it fluffy and make sure that it's, you know, not too high in front of the goal net or too low in the middle of the field. So it's maintenance that has to happen, and there are certain tools or pieces of maintenance equipment that are required. If the tower cannot, you know, handle it, we would like you to consider a shed somewhere in that vicinity to be able to handle that type of stuff because there are, you know, pieces that have to go in there. Once again, chemical cleaners should not be used on any type of artificial turf that's installed. To properly maintain east as a natural grass field, this is very important, we felt, to properly maintain eastfield as a natural grass field, outsourcing maintenance should be considered, and a thorough plan and schedule be developed with professionals. What we're talking about there is not the lawn mowing. What we're talking about is pre-emergent, you know, pre-emergent for bugs, the, everything that you need, there's like a whole program that a turf company will come in and make sure that they're, you know, it's aerated the right amount of times. And I know that we're doing that now, and I don't know whether we could continue to do that, but there's a whole list of things that have to be done that probably are not being done now because you'd need certain, you know, DEC approvals and, you know, things like that. So we want to make sure that the eastfield is maintained. We know that it'll be better maintained now because of an irrigation system that we're recommending, but there's a lot more to growing grass than just water. The deteriorating condition of upper and lower dowels must be reviewed. Because our fields are interrelated and function as a system, we want to make sure that they're all addressed accordingly. We examined the two other fields, lower lower dowels and Main Street School, consider giving them improvement and remedying if necessary in the future. Once again, the committee thanks the board for the opportunity to sit and be involved and, you know, have a say or do our due diligence to make sure that you guys have the necessary information that you need to make your decision, and it certainly will not be an easy one. At this time, the backup slides are primarily financial, and Dr. Harrison would like to go through costs and things like that of what we're recommending we do.
Thank you very much, Rick, and thank you, Deb, for the excellent presentation. The slides I'm going to share now and just speak to briefly don't go into great detail, but I think it provides a bit of a frame for some of the conversation that Rick has introduced tonight. But when we speak about eastfield and we talk about the required improvements and our desired improvements, if we roll back the hands of time and think about discussions that we've had going back to the start of 2014, we talked about different possibilities for remediation, and Rick alluded to some of the options that were before us. And initially, we were looking at two natural turf options and one artificial turf option. All concepts that, working with our engineers and our preliminary conversations that we had had with DEC and DOH, we believed were all approvable. So as we went through this process and almost recently, approximately two weeks ago, met with DEC and DOH, and they went further analysis of all of our lab results, and not only looking at what was found, but the percentages of the materials that were found, looking at extensive results. And as we said along the way, that hundreds of samplings were taken, and DEC and DOH determined that, they believe we already have one clean foot of fill across the field that is covering our construction debris that sits beneath the playing surface. Therefore, based upon that determination, they said it wasn't necessary to do two other things. One of our options that we were exploring was to bring in two feet of fill, and looking at two feet of clean fill, and as Rick said before, it doesn't have to be two feet of just soil, but it could have been a rock, it could have been sand, it could have been clay, different matters. We could have covered the entire field in two feet of this clean fill, but in doing so, we recognize significant cost increases. We acknowledge that there's about a third of acre trees that we would have to remove to be able to accommodate that volume of a cap. And we also talked about concern for our community and the fact that we had nearly 500 trucks that would be coming through Little Irvington Village here hauling all this fill in. The second option looked at bringing one foot of fill, but going to areas where we had exceedances of some of the compounds or the metals that were in the soil from our initial testing, excavating those particular areas, backfilling those areas with clean fill, and then covering the field with one foot... with a one foot of clean fill. But that's where DEC, DOH stepped in and said, and really reviewed the data that we had presented. And they determined that those exceedances, while we acknowledged that these numbers were there, were statistical anomalies. And some of these occurrences could be minerals that actually generate in our environment. It could have been a, one little pinprick within a volume of soil that was tested. And they went and looked at all the variety of samples. So you went to a particular spot and we sampled vertically at different depths. And then we backed off at a perimeter, going away from those areas. And those other surrounding areas and the different depths, the findings were, were clean and within DEC's comfort level. And this, so therefore they've recommended that we do not go with a more extensive two-foot cap. They've also said that the further excavation isn't necessary. They believe that we will have a two-foot clean barrier between all of our community members, student athletes, and the construction debris. And in doing so, our costs are reduced. We're looking at not having to remove any trees as per this plan. And we're greatly limiting the number of trucks that will be coming and going from the field. So there's some certain advantages there. So when we look at the scope of this project, it would be a natural grass field. The committee felt strongly that we should seed the field as opposed to sodding the field. And in seeding the field, we certainly would feel the develop a healthier root system, a more durable root system. And we'd be installing an extensive drainage system to not only deal with the vertical flow from rainfall that would come onto the field, but any surface flow that may come from areas in and around the field. We would capture that water, divert it away from our neighbors' properties and Field Point and bring it into a storm sewer system. When we look at the scope of this project, we're looking at a cost of approximately $1.2 million. In looking at these numbers, and I understand that we discussed some earlier projections, but caught, these are looking at real costs. This is building in soft costs. This is building in a 10 to 15 percent contingency, recognizing that there could be complications related to the job or the cost of materials could increase as we go through the process. So, and then looking at Mazeros Field and Ole Track here, as Rick pointed out before, there were a variety of artificial turf surfaces that were reviewed by the committee. The committee expressed a preference in either a hybrid artificial turf material or an organic turf material. So for our illustration here, we've used the hybrid product. We, the committee also felt strongly that it was important to engineer a substantial drainage, drainage system. So if we're talking about our concern for our neighbors, where we're talking about minimizing impact on our community membership around the campus, with east field, we're expressing our concern and our partnership with the folks in Field Point and wanting to engineer a system that's going to properly address our needs. But we're also looking at the same for Mazeros and Ole Track in that the recommendation was presented that we provide an additional six-inch stone base beneath the field. So we would have a 12-inch base that would really improve the opportunity for drainage. It gave us the opportunity to store more water and heavy rainfall and release the flow at a lower rate. It would have less of an impact on our residents on the riverside, the River View side of the campus. In that, we're also looking at, of course, a, a updated irrigation system and replacing Ole Track. Just for a purpose of illustration, we've broken out how the costs are proportioned for this work and looking at a, a cost that is just shy of $1.8 million. Please note the footnote at the bottom of the slide where we identified that going to a full organic product would increase the expense by approximately $70,000 to $80,000. And then finally, and you will note from this slide, we are looking at a cost analysis between a grass field and an artificial field, artificial turf field, so natural turf versus artificial turf from Mazeros Field. And in doing so, we've looked at, and this is for illustrative purposes, and I, I want to reinforce that point, and I think it's also reinforced by the five footnotes at the bottom of the, this illustration. But looking at where we anticipate the possible costs associated with this. So to help you understand, we have a column that's identified as looking at unit prices. So it's not designed to necessarily be cumulative going from left to right, but looking at what we anticipate the cost may be. These costs were developed by land utilizing industry standards, by reaching out to all the different vendors that may do this type of work to get real costs, reaching out to other school districts to see what they're spending on things such as resurfacing costs, maintenance costs if you're to outsource maintenance. So in doing so, you can see that the difference here in looking at the 10-year cost for natural turf versus artificial turf, $121,000 versus $160,000. And then when you break that out over a longer period of time, that difference is reduced a bit from $88,000 to approximately $108,000. Again, for this illustration, we took a look at the hybrid product and of course, there's some variance in, in costs that could come into play if you were to look at different artificial turfs. The crumb rubber, which the committee noted, they are not recommending certainly would be cheaper and an organic material would be higher. When we look at the costs that are built into this or the expenses built into this, as I said, we're, we're being very conservative because we didn't ever want to come out and say that we shot low in trying to make an argument one way or another. If anything, these costs may be a little bit on, on the higher end of the spectrum, but we wanted to present a, an illustration that could inform some thinking, recognize what some of those longer-term impacts may be. An example of where those conservative views may have come in, it could be looking at the maintenance costs for a natural turf field, may end up being a few thousand dollars cheaper a year. You wouldn't necessarily know until you got requests and bid that type of work. Looking at resurfacing or buying a new carpet for an artificial turf field, certainly today, prices range depending on the type of product you have, anywhere from $450,000 to $500,000, speaking to other surrounding districts. Some are telling us they're spending $450,000. But again, we wanted to be conservative to present what the type of exposure the district may see over this extended period of time. So with that said, I think Mrs. Kerner, we're willing to pass everything off to you and the board at this point for your comments and questions. And then we'd like to, of course, hear thoughts from the public.
Okay, we'll do what we did last time. If we have any questions specifically about the presentation, we'll start with the board and then I think I'll open it to the community and then we'll maybe close with the board. But, okay, so I will turn it over to you guys. Who wants to go first?
Well, I, I feel like I just want to try to understand the thinking behind the different conclusions that the, kind of maybe to go through, might just be helpful. I've got lots of things I don't fully get and I wonder about and I don't want to belabor all of them, most of them, but not all of them. Let me just start. You know, the artif, the, the idea of no artificial turf at east field, to me, it's, you guys were unanimous on that. And I don't think anybody, I don't think there's, I mean, I haven't heard a clear, any clear argument for why we would want artificial turf on east field. So, so, but I, I think I don't understand as clearly the, the logic for, I mean, it sounds like a nice field, the artificial turf on Mazeros, but I don't really quite follow the logic of why, why it's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah. One of the things that wasn't in the, the PowerPoint but is in your, in your report is the fact that when you look at usage, you can use a natural turf field about 700 hours a year, whereas you can, you can use a artificial turf field about 2,800 hours a year. So it's four times.
But can I just stop you on that? Are we, what does that translate into the difference in the program we would be running on those fields in those two circumstances? Because nobody's really laid out the sort of difference of, of, you know, if we're, if we're going, if we're, if we have a field we can use four times as much, what are we, what are we going to do on that field that we weren't doing with the, the grass field?
Well, once again, I think if you look at page 19 in, in your report, it speaks directly to the amount of hours that, that each different type of field can, can withstand.
Right. Well, I, wait, I have an old...
What you've, what you've been doing, the answer to your question is what you've been doing up till now?
Are you talking about, sorry, Rick, are you talking about the report or the?
This.
The report.
The report, okay. Yeah, it's different. The version I had here was different from the version I printed out earlier, so I was confused.
We were told by a turf expert that with all the hours that you saw on those, on those charts and all the different teams that are on those charts, we need approximately seven fields to be able to accommodate all of our teams and, and different activities that we have. As I said earlier, a natural turf field, I mean, an, an artificial turf field with lights equals four grass fields.
And why did you guys vote against lights and?
On east field?
No, aren't we talking about Mazeros and the artificial turf?
Well, on Mazeros, we, we voted for an artificial turf field.
Right, against, against lights. But I just don't understand, I don't understand the logic of greater use because it's just not, I'm, I'd like to.
I, I think to the point, and if I may, Rick, we're not talking about programming the fields differently. We're talking about this, be able to sustain the usage needs that are present with our existing programs. So aside from looking at the reduction of programs, we've, we've looked at an analysis of the usage of all the fields in the village. So that's district fields, that is village fields, and to see how the fields could be used to accommodate what the present need is, primarily for the school district program, but also supplementally with the community programs. And to be able to sustain that type of usage, if the committee is recommending the development of an artificial turf field because it has greater durability, doesn't require the same level of rest that an artificial field would be, would take into consideration.
Can, can we get, so you probably should pass the mic around if we're going to have the people participate.
Why don't you come on? Michael Troy, I was one of the board members, committee members. We, for me, what was, what was critical was when you broke it down on a weekly basis, remind me, my numbers are wrong, but an astroturf field, an artificial field you can use for like 75 to 80 hours a week. A grass field starts to break down after like 35 hours a week. We're already exceeding that on Mazeros, which is part of the reason besides its drainage problems is it's in the condition it's in now. I don't know if that helps, but even on a weekly basis, we're already overusing the grass field.
I guess as a corollary, though, I'm just trying to figure out, what do we estimate? Like, we're actually estimating, but optimal, how many hours a day? Like, do we say 3:30? I think you said 3:30 to 6 is what we'll use as an estimate? Like, what's the total playing time we have per field, assuming the fields can handle it? What is the optimal number of time in the weekend and the week? Like, what's that total number of hours?
The best we can come? The ideal, the ideal, you mean, what would be ideal if we had?
No, no, I, I mean, without light, there's, I mean, there's only daylight so many hours. So after school, to sun goes down during the school year, I'm just trying to figure out what those number of hours is.
I think it was estimated three and a half. I think it was estimated three and a half the school day is over.
And just wondering, how is things, might be more than that, 3:30 to 7?
Depends on the time of year.
We, we looked at an average because there's going to be times earlier in the year where you're going to get dark earlier and you're going to lose light. And there's going to be times in the spring where you have extended daylight.
Weekends, eight, nine to six. What did you look at on weekends?
I think we looked at six and a half hours a day on weekends.
Six and a half on the weekends and 3:30 to 6.
But then that, when we look at the weekdays though, that 3:30, 6, it's not taking into consideration the hours for PE during the day.
Right. And, and when we're talking about the fields needing the sort of the wear and tear on the fields, are we including PE in that or is that considered a light enough usage that we really don't consider?
Well, I think we took that number and cut it in half as far as the actual, instead of, we talked about 30 hours, 30 hours a week, which is six hours times five days. But we know that the wear and tear is, is not the same as, as a, you know, athletic team's practice.
Right.
So we essentially cut that.
Nobody's tackling anybody or whatever.
Exactly. We've essentially cut it in half.
But that time limits our ability to, one, generally beyond that rest word that was used in quotation marks, but it hinders the ability to be able to maintain the field and for custodians to be out working on the field and aerating the field and so on.
Yeah, there's certain daily maintenance that, that are required on the fields that if the students are on it, they wouldn't be able to do it. So we didn't, you know, use the whole school day as far as the, the amount of hours that we were, we were looking at.
Sorry, you were gonna? Do you want to go to the mic? Again, because just mostly because in, in the video, nobody will be able to hear you.
One of the things, Linda Pierpont, I was also on the committee. The, the usage component of the artificial versus the natural, you also have to add to the fact that tomorrow might be 60 degrees. If there were an artificial turf field, kids could be outside because it could have been plowed and children would be out in the fresh air. At the rate we're going now, varsity sports have their first games on March 19th. I believe that's nine days away. Someone laugh?
It is nine days away.
Nine days away. If we had an artificial turf field, we could have a home contest. We may not have a home contest till May at the rate we're going now.
What, because of the snow?
The snow's going to melt and it's going to be mud out there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
In theory, we could have an art, a contest tomorrow because we could have plowed the field. So it also, it also gives you more field time based on weather. You can play lacrosse, soccer and football in, anything short of a torrential downpour without thunder and lightning on an artificial turf field. Our grass field can't accommodate so many things right now. And a new grass field would have to be rested during those times. So you need, we could really use to maintain, it gives us a lot more hours of playing time based on weather and things too. It's not just the numbers on the chart.
I think there was a number in there, something like 104 days to rain last year?
But there were 104 days of rain.
Right, last year. And so some of those days arguably we wouldn't have been able to play if there was.
My sister-in-law is the athletic director in the Bedford Central School District and she has not lost a contest, not lost a PE class, not lost recess for her middle through high school in the 10 years that they've had an artificial turf field. And they're just considering resurfacing after 10 to 12 years. So it's, you know, there's, there is a really huge benefit to having all that extra time.
Let me ask you another.
I'm not an expert, but I'm just saying I ask a lot of questions.
John, I just want to draw your attention to exhibit two within the report, which appears at page 19, which I think also partially addresses your question. What we had done on the committee is asked the same question you're asking, which is, we started with, how many sports do we have? Where are the kids playing? How many hours are we using them on average? And do we have enough fields? And for those of us on the committee, we can do, we can do it by observation. We could count up the number of fields. We know there's Mazeros, east field, upper and lower dows. We have four natural grass fields. And we know from experience, when you walk around those fields, that they're in poor condition. So we asked an outside landscape architect to come in and give us an analysis based on four grass fields and the number of hours we're using them, how do we fare? And what the exhibit two does is, is what he did for us, Scott Hughes, is he took a look and he counted up the number of hours by fall and by spring. And what he told us in general is that a natural grass field can be used 700 hours per year. And based on our usage, he said that, again, 3.5 hours per day plus the weekend usage, we would need seven natural grass fields to sustain our usage. We know we don't have seven natural grass fields. We only have four. That's why they're in poor condition. And in order to continue sustaining that usage, what are alternatives? The alternative is we could go with one artificial turf field either with or without lights. And depending on whether we had lights or not, that would give us more availability for our students.
While we're on, a couple of things that are related to this. Why would we, why would we not want lights? I, I don't understand that. You know, that would, if we're going to do an artificial turf field, I mean, I don't know how much lights would cost. It'd be helpful to know. But it would seem like that would get us so much more return for our investment to have the flexibility to use the thing.
It increases the, it actually, as I said, an artificial...
I don't know how expensive lights are, but... I don't know how expensive lights are, but.
Do you have an idea? Cost of lights?
About a quarter million dollars.
For lights, you could play a football game or lacrosse game under or whatever.
One football game a year at night, or even all of them, even if you want to do all of them, that's, it's an expense. One of the things that, one of the stigmas that goes along with an artificial turf field is lights. And the naysayers when it comes to artificial fields say, it's just a luxury that we don't want to pay for. Frankly, to add an hour or two a day in most of, on both of the fall and spring seasons, it's a pretty big expense to add to the project and perhaps not get the return on investment that we really, that we really expected or wanted, frankly, at this time.
And I think we say at this time because I think we have, we have to be students of history here in Irvington. And we have to understand where we've been. And there've been two efforts to address this same type of problem in the past. And in doing so, we have to be mindful of what some of the sticking points were. And there was great opposition to lights. And right now, our primary concern is to deliver appropriate playing surfaces for our students. And if that is an option that the community and the board want to consider in the future, I think that is what the committee's recommendation is, hence the consideration that was put into the report for installing conduit or infrastructure that could support that type of work. But looking at it today, there is, there is concern about the, one, the viability of this effort. If we go that route and think it should be another phase of work or consideration down the road, if that's an interest that the community and board has. But then also looking at some of the practicality of being able to complete this, to have a bond referendum this fall to be able to address this work. If we were to pursue lights at this point in time, the belief is that we'd need to have a secret study. Secret study would put us in a position.
What study?
SEQA.
What's that?
S-E-Q-R-A.
Rich, do you want to speak to?
The environmental quality review.
Have three issues there. Is the environmental quality?
Well, do we have to have that to issue a bond on it?
To get SED approval, yes.
SEDs.
State Education Department.
And that has, okay. It just seems like, you know, we're talking, the proposal is a, you know, I don't know what we're talking, we're talking about three million dollars for fields already to, you know. Anyway, I just would like to think about that issue a little bit more and see the numbers a little bit more because it does, and I am concerned that we, especially in the times of year where it starts getting dark earlier, that it's, it's nice to be able to have that option or have the option for an evening game in a sport. I don't know how real, how common or realistic that is, but it might be. Or to have, you know, late practices even for a youth sport. You know, if we get more, we might get more return from our investment. And I think if the committee is going to support three million dollars in fields, they're probably not going to stick on that, is my judgment. But drain, I want to ask about drainage also on Mazeros. How much of the, what kind of study has been done of the, where the water's coming from there and where it's going?
I'll let you speak to the engineer, the engineer, the assistant.
Evening, it's Rich Wasbrough. Mazeros Field, you have, a little closer?
Yeah, better.
You have the area upland of Mazeros Field, currently the wood, wood, this changed names a couple of times.
Deerman.
Deerman, it's current name.
Look at that hill there, right.
To get that hill, that does flow down, majority of that water actually does not go through Mazeros Field. Majority of that water actually leads towards Field Point through their detention basin and piping system. So it's, when one looks at it quickly, you think you have all that water coming down.
So you're talking about from Deerman Park to Development, yeah?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's not surprising.
So from the back of the houses of Deerman Park down to the field, that immediate hillside, that area, and the area of the track and field. That's the area that drains through Mazeros Field to the River View.
There's sort of the saddle that's kind of behind the River View houses, you know, on the, next to that hill, does that also drain down there?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, John.
It's kind of a saddle. There are houses on River View, and behind the houses in River View, there's like a little path, and water drains through there? Sort of my impression.
Are you referring to the area between Deerman and River View?
Yeah, River View houses, yeah.
Yes, I used to walk to school that way. There is a path back there.
And does that water drain down to Mazeros?
Well, a good resource for you is that the village has done an extensive study of the entire village, but it helps you in answering your question, there's three drainage areas in the village that the school's property crisscrosses through. Part of it's in River View, part of it's to the Main Street, and the other is further to the south. Through the Field Point property and then continuing further south from there.
So then my follow-up question on this is, the Mazeros water problems, to what extent are they a function of water falling through rainfall on that field versus water coming onto the field from the side, from drainage, from water flowing?
Majority of the water estimated, I'd say probably sixty percent of the water is probably within the Mazeros Field and track itself, and the other forty percent is uphill in the wooded area from the back of the houses on down. That's a rough estimate, you know, just practically looking at the mapping.
Do we have any, any plan in place to deal with that forty percent?
Well, that forty percent currently is collected in catch basins.
I'm sorry, it doesn't go on Mazeros then?
Right. No. There are catch basins on the high side by the home bleachers.
Okay, so none of that water gets onto Mazeros. So all of the water sitting that's on, because I hear different things on this, all of the water on Mazeros comes from the sky directly. That's what I'm trying to get at. Okay, not flowing, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so therefore, you know, the hope is that, and can somebody explain to me how the, what we're doing to solve the water problems? You know, I know that the geese, my friends, the geese will be unhappy with these changes, but other than that, I think it'll be a good thing to solve the water problems on Mazeros.
I don't think you can say you're solving their water problems. You're trying to help improve their situation, but you can't solve it. What the drainage involves at Mazeros Field is to make use of, in the artificial turf scenario, make use of the stone which is inherent in the base design of a, of an artificial turf field, supplementing that with additional stone, or more importantly, the voids within the stone to add storage. So as it rains, that stone or the voids in the stone get filled with water, and then you control how it releases. So it releases at a slower rate than what it does now. So the water still goes to River View, but you're releasing it more slowly.
And to be clear, it drains into the pond?
Yes.
Pond, yes.
So it would, it goes, is it only, it's only a question of how, whether it goes to that pond quickly versus slowly, and the problem with the quickly is it may cause flooding?
Correct.
But in neither case, that doesn't explain why the Mazeros gets waterlogged, either case.
Because of the current conditions?
Currently, we don't have anything like that.
It's a terrible drainage issue right now.
And it's quite. The drainage issues at Mazeros stem from a couple of things. One is the surface is very compact, it's hard, and it's puddling on the surface. It doesn't have the typical pitch you would have on a natural turf field. It isn't, doesn't have that same crown. So water tends to sit in little pockets, little pockets form little puddles, puddles turn into mud and kids play on it, and then you lose the grass, and it just accelerates. You also have an underlying issue of poor soils below the field. So you've got surface issues, you've got underlying issues that compound the scenario there.
And to what extent would a, a natural turf field, could a natural turf field be designed there that would also have in it the right solutions to the drainage problem? Because that, these are sort of separable problems, aren't they? Drainage and what the turf is. And we're going to get more usage if we can solve the drainage problems, no matter what the turf is.
John, can I just chime in here and just remind everybody that we actually talked about this last August. They, they actually did a presentation about the natural turf field, and I know you weren't on the board then, so, or I guess it wasn't even last August, it must have been August two thousand twelve, pardon me. But they actually went through a pretty detailed presentation about what a natural turf field would look like with the drainage. And I just want to remind everybody that that was already presented, and we could go back through that again, but maybe tonight.
Well, but we also have a fields committee that in principle looked at this, right? So I'm hoping we have the answer in this, in this room.
Yeah.
I didn't think I would want one.
Right, right, okay. Okay. But, no, so can I get the question answered then?
The question is, yes, you could install a natural turf field with a proper drainage system, a field that would have a healthy soil foundation, for lack of better terms, that would be diverted appropriately and drained appropriately. But the inherent problem in that solution as the, per the committee's recommendation was the usage and wear and tear and maintenance needs for a natural turf field. So it is possible.
Which I'm going to have to review because I just don't understand the numbers. But, okay. But that, do we know what that would cost to do that?
We do. It's in the, looking at the comparison at the end of the. Looking at a comparison here, John, top line figures.
So it would be about?
About three hundred thousand.
Roughly three hundred thousand dollars.
Less.
Less.
The initial outline. And for that, and the cost of that, the down, the negative of that is we would get, we would solve some of the playing time problems because the field wouldn't have the waterlogged issues.
Maybe not, John, because the fields are already overused, so it's not guaranteed.
Would you have to rest that field?
So the waterlogged, and the water isn't an issue, and that's just resting?
It's part of the issue. It's the issue now.
The water is the issue now, why it's not usable.
Yeah, but it's.
Even if they had pristine drainage.
So even if we solved the water problem, we wouldn't get more use.
You still can only use it seven hundred hours, you know, a year versus twenty-eight hundred hours for an artificial turf.
But I think to be very direct in answer to your question, the drainage situation would be improved, yes. I think that's, I don't think anyone's going to argue with that. But then the time in and around rain, the fields would have to be closed, so you're eliminating usage during any wet period of time, so our student athletes don't tear up the field and lead to the same muddy type conditions that were referenced with the current scenario. But it, I don't think we'd argue that it would be bad.
No, I get the appeal, I just think I'm just trying to.
But in addition to that, the bottom line is, is we have a lot of teams that have used, even if all of the fields were healthy and we got them all in great playing condition, is it fair to say within two years' time approximately, those fields would be destroyed again? I mean, Upper Dows is a fairly new field, and that's pretty, and it's in bad condition because we're overusing.
Three years old.
Yeah, it's, we're overusing our current fields.
I think we should know as far as so many committee members were concerned, because a lot of this is going to depend on how the fields are designed and how they're maintained. So I would not build the assumption that a natural grass field would be destroyed in two years, that simply is not the case.
Right, right. Yeah.
We're not mentioning installation terms of land, we didn't mention that.
That's, that's another issue as far as going artificial versus natural. East Field is going to have, after it's completed, it's going to have to rest for twelve to eighteen months. We won't be able to use it for twelve to eighteen months because it's a natural turf field. It needs three growing seasons, according to the experts, to get to a point where you can then use it to what we expect to use a natural turf field. Whereas if we were to put in an artificial turf field, we can use it as soon as it's completed. There's no, there's no rest time.
That's East Field, right, but we're not, nobody's, we're not seriously considering artificial.
But if we use the same scenario, we would be able to use it for three playing seasons.
And to clarify, there's a range. You could say in some scenarios, under the right conditions, that you could be twelve months. So we're looking at twelve to eighteen months.
If, if we redid Mazeros with better drainage system.
For any natural grass field, regardless of.
And what, just you had something in there about it's longer, it can seed versus it can roll out.
Yes. But, but it's the overall, the overall life of the turf.
But a better turf wants to do the seeding.
Once, if you seed it, see, because we can engineer the type of grass that we want at that field. We need a real hardy, you know, durable grass. We can have our engineers engineer that. Whereas a turf, it's a rolled up turf and it's, you know, it requires a lot more maintenance in the beginning to get it, you know.
How much quicker could we, I'm just curious, how much quicker?
About one, about one, it's still about six to eight months, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
At a premium, I think of.
Of a hundred thousand dollars extra it would cost for sod versus seed.
Another question, the artificial, artificial turf, it was an issue here before in Irvington. It's obviously been an issue in Hastings and some other places. All of the sort of constellation of, oh, no chemicals, oh, no, the environmental, the health, whatever else. What, what analysis, what information do we have on those issues? There's a lot of different views out there, I think, and I'm just kind of wondering whether we, and they'll surface, even if we don't surface them here, so we ought to just kind of understand what, what the lay of the land is on those. I just kind of wondered what, what kind of fact finding you guys did.
Well, extensive. For every, for every report we saw that, you know, extolled the virtues of a natural turf field, there was another report that, you know, that spoke to the issues or the virtues of artificial turf. In the end, I think for most of us, the New York State DEC had a report that said there, the VOCs or the, the negative environmental impacts were not what, you know, some of the other reports have said that they were. The amount of injury on natural turf versus artificial turf was negligible. The studies, you know, contradicted each other, there was nothing major to report there. So most of what we went by was the New York State DEC's opinion as to playability, safety, and things of that nature.
But how about environmental impact of the artificial material?
Well, that's one of the reasons why we didn't want to go exclusively crumb rubber infill. What we, what we talked about, what we recommend is either a pure hybrid, a pure organic material, which is for, for most of these manufacturers, which is corn, excuse me, coconut husks, rice husks, and cork. That's a pure, that's what they've been using for a pure organic infill.
Pure organic.
Pure organic. Now, what we've talked about, what we recommend is, there's a hybrid that's, that's between the two. Essentially, it's the crumb rubber infill below, and that, we have a sample of it back there. And on top is a, is a larger cork filament that, that's going to be set on top of that. Essentially, when it rains, the cork will float up on top, so it kind of keeps itself, it keeps the crumb rubber encapsulated. Will there be crumb rubber, you know, in your, in your cleats and everything else? Yes, along with cork. But in addition to us recommending it, one of the main reasons is that it has a thirty degree temperature difference between a straight crumb rubber infill and this particular hybrid product. So if we were to use it, if we wanted to use it at, you know, at high heat times, we'd be much better off because it would be thirty degrees lower. And it's also only thirty cents a foot more if you look at the, what they, what they recommended. If we were to go with straight organic, it's another seventy to eighty thousand dollars on top of the original cost of the, of the artificial turf. So that was another reason.
Do we, maybe I, maybe you said this and I just kind of didn't catch it, but do we have, are there, do these, these products come with studies that we can rely on about the health and environmental impacts?
We have, in our, in the, the committee had a Dropbox set up that was orchestrated by, by Dr. Harrison, and he, we all had reports and studies that we wanted to include as, as a basis for our due diligence. In that, in that Dropbox, there are many, many articles on both sides of the, you know, both sides of the issue. So if you wanted to yourself, do the, do the due diligence, it's all there for you, I guess.
Somebody can maybe, you know, I'm not sure, I'm really eager to read a bunch of articles, but you know, it's.
They were, they were extensive, so. And that's part of, you know, what, what our charge was, is to, is to go through them all and try to make a sense of all of them.
So your judgment is that there weren't. So your judgment is that there weren't serious health and environmental issues with this?
That's the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's position, that there were, the, the health and, that's what we concluded, by way of the, the New York State's, uh, DEC's, um, uh, report.
Could we hear the other view, then? Because I think it'd be helpful to, because those views are gonna come up. Um, I think it'd be very helpful to hear them.
I don't know if there's one view that encapsulates the whole other side.
It's just because these are, these, you know, these are, these get to be very vocal issues, and, and, you know. If that's okay, I just think it'd be helpful to, you know, hear the facts, or other people's views of the facts, I mean.
Most compelling case-
Sorry, can you introduce yourself, please?
Tom Jackson, I'm on the, uh, committee. Most compelling cases, far as the environmental and health issues are concerned, come from medical experts, and we have some of those reports on the, among the Dropbox material. The, uh, there are bodies of study that analyze the conflicting reports and try to evaluate the strengths and weaknesses of the methodologies that are used. And, the, DEC's report notwithstanding, there is substantial evidence to the contrary, as well as evidence to support their view. So, as a practical matter, we were looking to address some of those issues, and one of the difficulties is that there is a huge amount of industry, meaning artificial turf industry-generated material. There are a limited number of advocates for, uh, natural turf. There are associations of, of, uh, companies that are in the business of, uh, selling turf. There is other material out there. But, we really found the environmental concerns to be sufficiently compelling that some of us thought that they should've been given greater weight in the process. The, uh, the, the, the fact remains, I believe, as far as others in the community are concerned, you're quite correct that it is going to be an area of concern, there are going to be questions that are raised, and, uh, the questions will need to be answered beyond the four corners of the report that was submitted.
John, just to follow up what Tom was saying, one of the things we did try to do in the report was at least list the concerns that those of us had, and make sure that it was balanced to the extent we were able to capture that in our minutes and, and at the meetings. So I just wanna draw your attention again, within the report, to page fifteen and sixteen, and to those of you in the audience who are wondering what we did specifically consider and what we talked about. There are representations that we listed that came up at the meeting, or there were queries that were made after the meeting that we attempted to answer. But, to Tom's point, there's, there is a lot of data, both from the artificial turf world, as well as from those who are in favor of natural grass. Frankly, you have to read it to understand it. That's what we did. We sat down and looked at what was in the Dropbox. And for some of us, we were more persuaded by one document or one study than, than others were. But at the end of the day, that's why the vote came down the way that it did. We, many of us looked at everything. Usage was very important to some of us on the committee. Environmental concerns were more important to others. And at the end of the day, we're recommending, the majority of us, an artificial turf field, but not with crumb rubber, because there were concerns with those reports and with that data.
Would, would the environmental and health concerns be, be lessened if we went to a full organic?
Yes, is, my understanding is yes. And once you eliminate crumb rubber entirely, you, you are lessening the concerns that folks have raised, and the documents, um, some of the documents speak to that, that are in the Dropbox.
And what, I mean, the, the other people on the committee who had, who gave more weight to the environmental issues, would they, do you have, do you have a view on the, on the full organic?
The question was asked, that if it was going to be a synthetic turf field-
Right.
What were the views with regard to the different types of infill? And it clearly is correct that shredded tire rubber is an issue. And that was recognized, I believe, by everyone on the committee, and there was a recommendation against, uh, the, uh, synthetic or crumb rubber infill. The, uh, the view of some of us is simply that a hybrid infill reduces the amount of crumb rubber, but it doesn't eliminate the problems that are associated with it. There, there is a reduction in the temperature of the playing fields, and that is, was one of the significant, uh, considerations. But from a purely environmental or health point of view, if the offending material is still there, it really doesn't satisfy the problem, or at least, that was the sense of some of us.
But I thought the, the organic, that we would, we would still have, um-
What, the tire, the particles or whatever it is, or, or not in the organic?
Organic would eliminate-
The organic would eliminate the tire product.
Organic would eliminate the crumb rubber infill, correct.
Okay, right.
And then I'm just, I'm guessing, but the reason that organic wasn't recommended, was that because of the decreased playing hours? Or why, as a committee, then, if the organic mitigated the crumb rubber infill issue, why, as a committee, I'm just trying to understand the job, how, why did most of the people choose the hybrid versus the organic?
I don't, I don't believe that there was a clear consensus as far as a preference of one over the other, at least as I recall the-
What, what are the-
Votes that were taken on that particular point, which is hybrid versus organic. We're very clear on the outcome with regard to the crumb rubber, so.
Very, very few, very few fields have gone to one hundred percent organic. It's, it's, I think it's less than one percent, I think. So the proven length and, and how long in organic field, what the consequences are of that, are very unknown. It's very brand-new, and we do, we have no idea really what, how, how, the sustainability so on and so forth, so it's a brand-new idea.
So we don't know whether it would last five years or ten years? So that's, that's the main risk.
There's one in Riverdale. There's one in Riverdale that's pure organic, and, and it's, it's relatively new, so we don't, we don't have a, a track record on it.
Where, where in Riverdale is it?
Riverdale, yeah.
Riverdale, County D?
Yeah.
Go look at it.
Just in terms of the, the committee, I'm Michael Hannah, I was on the committee, uh, in terms of the different types of surfaces or, or infill for the, uh, artificial, uh, fields, it was that the hybrid had the most votes of the committee, so represents the two spectrums, and is, uh, but, uh, you know, once you went to the purely, uh, organic, I guess there's cost factors that maybe influenced other. So, there was nobody really in favor, uh, of the chrome fill only.
Yeah.
The largest number was in far, in favor of the hybrid, and then you have the organic. So that's why you get that number, is it had the most.
Okay, okay. But it was kind of a plurality, you mean, rather than a majority? But it's also just helpful to hear the, the details behind it, as opposed to the-
I just wanna also be clear, because, to be fair to all the members on the committee, we specifically were not asked, as part of our charge, to take a vote on whether we preferred one type of synthetic turf field over another. But we thought it would be helpful to the board to inform you what those of us in the room felt was the most favorable, based on the documents and our information. So we only asked for a showing of hands. It wasn't a vote, and you could vote more than once. So we said, who was in favor of the hybrid, and who was in favor of the organic. We also asked who was in favor of the, the pure crumb rubber, and nobody raised their hand. And we did put that in the report, but I don't want you to think it was a vote, because that would be misleading.
So is it fair that the, the organic, although it may have fewer issues regarding environmental or health, has a lot more uncertainty about how it will wear over time and such?
I think that's a fair statement. It's a newer product.
And maybe, you mean, it costs more, right. We know it costs more initially.
We also don't know what the, what the maintenance, how much maintenance is required, because an organic infill will deteriorate more quickly than, than an inorganic, obviously.
Makes sense, yeah.
And we have part of that issue with the hybrid, because the cork will deteriorate somewhat, but, um, and there were also, in the costs of the, of the turf, of the, uh, hybrid turf, uh, most of the, uh, artificial turfs came with a, a supply of, um, either organic infill or crumb rubber, whatever, whatever your, your, you know, uh, infill was gonna be, there was, there was some level of, of that. But we know, from what we've been told, that the, the organic will require, they'll require more organic material, just because it's gonna break down faster. Beyond that.
Thanks. I have one more, one more question, before I, I yield the floor, before it gets too late.
Wait, can I, I have one more thing on the organic.
Okay, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
While we're on it?
All right, sure.
We've asked, two questions, is, um, in terms of the hybrid, I, I, has it been around a longer, longer than the organic, but has it been around a while?
No, it has not been.
Can you do as well?
It's, it's been around a shorter period of time than the organic.
Okay, okay. And then, in terms of the playing time, the crumb rubber has the longest, is it a sliding scale?
You know what, I don't, I don't think the difference between the, the, you know, are negligible, they're negligible.
Well, the issue there is they have, the, the grass field has to rest, right? Do any of these fields really have to rest?
Artificial do not.
And they never sleep.
I mean, if you, if you're overusing them before you maintain them, you'll compact the infill and things like that.
Yeah, I know we have, we have enough, we have sort of a separate issue that we need to address, is that we need to, whatever fields we have, we need to make sure that we're maintaining them properly, and, and the evidence seems to be that we have-
That was the committee's feeling.
Artificial or natural.
The underlying thing from the committee was-
And Downs Lane and everywhere else, too.
Was maintenance, that's right.
And we need to make sure that we're doing that, and I'm not, it's not clear that we have been doing that. We need to understand what that's gonna cost and what it's gonna be.
Once again, I think, I think we have been maintaining them. The problem is, the, the amount of usage, you, you couldn't maintain them properly if you wanted to, with the amount of usage that we, that we have.
Yeah, or even bef, even before, when we had East Field in place, that, you know, I don't know, Downs Lane fields used to be somewhat better.
Oh, no.
Especially the upper one.
There's no question that Upper Downs has suffered because of East Field.
Yeah, it used to be pretty nice.
There's no question, and a lot of the stuff that's happening on Upper Downs now will happen on East Field.
Yeah.
Going forward.
Um, oh, so, the other question I have is on the track. Um, I mean, I'll come back, I'm sure I'll have other questions, but I wanna let other people talk. Um, what, um, was there any thought to, you basically said we should replace the track, and I don't think that was a, it doesn't seem like there was any serious question. Does anybody have a serious question about whether the track should be replaced?
I don't think so. Our engineers, you know, have, have looked at it-
Right.
-in great detail.
Right, and I think, you know, I haven't heard anybody in-
You can go back there and look at the, the normal size of the surface, it's probably like that, I don't know what, it's, it's much, you know, degraded at this-
And how much of, how much cost are we talking about? I guess there are different grades, and we have to choose the right grade and cost.
Looking at a mid-grade, we're looking at-
Yeah, I just much more stand you guys though, because it's been around a long time, so you can get a real feel for what the cost would be, no one will ask.
But they last, how long do they last?
Typical track, yeah. Your typical track, once again-
You're, you're speaking to future generations, so you wanna do-
Future generation, typical track lasts about ten years. But once again, it depends on maintenance. If you have a lot of outside, people come in and use that center lane heavily, it gets worn heavily. Um, I always suggest that five to seven years, you start looking at the track for maintenance.
But, but when you say it lasts for ten years, or whatever, does that mean in ten years, we have to pay another five hundred, eight thousand dollars?
Possibly. Now, there's, there's intermediate steps between now and then, that you wanna look at, and it, and it depends on weather conditions, it depends on freeze-staw cycles.
How long does this track last?
Well-
This one was put in in nineteen eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine, ninety.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, ninety.
So that's twenty-five, twenty-five years. Can I just get another one of these?
That's almost twenty years, probably.
It, it depends heavily on how it's maintained, how it's used.
How much leaking do you get? Um, is, is the track configure, I know, I know it's a set, you know, distance around, but is the, is our track configuration the way we want it? Is there any discussion in the track program about needing anything different from what we've got, or is this really what we need for a, a strong track program? I mean, just the right number of, you know, is it the right surface, right lanes, all that?
And I think that there's multiple answers to this, and that you could do more.
Right.
You could have a different type of track, a bigger track, different options, but then, I think, so Artie can speak to some of that, but then Rich comes, a lot of this comes back to the potential engineering associated with the work. So I think Artie starts and Rich concludes.
Yeah, and I guess we have a sort of fairly confined area to do this in.
There you go.
Right. Go ahead.
I'm going further.
Well, but we do and we don't, right? You could probably move, move things around.
But if you look at our track compared to other tracks, ours is longer straightaways, shorter turns. People can have a, a quarter-meter track that's a little wider, where they get their field space in the middle. We currently, you know, house league meets, sexual meets, raspic relays, eighteen schools come. So we have, on that track, what we need to run all the, all the events.
Which is a six-lane, a six-lane track, yeah. I mean, I spent some time on, on it, yeah.
I'm sure track coaches would tell you, eight lanes, sprint, you know, uh, you know, sprint straightaways, all sorts of things that would enhance it, but what we have right now, uh, you know, we've been able to-
Yeah, I mean, I think the thing is, we wanna make sure that we have, you know, what we need to, you know, have a proper track program for, you know, middle school and high school, right?
I think Artie's articulated that you do have for what you need now. You, earlier tonight, you heard that in order to accommodate the soccer and lacrosse programs, you wanna move the runways to more or less the end zones, or D zones, as they're called, so that you can get a wider playing field for the fields. But in terms of the track, you have a six-lane, all-weather track that's four hundred meters.
Yeah.
So you're not looking at reconfiguring from the four forty yard, four hundred meter.
And that'll be on the exact same footprint we have track on now.
Correct. We, we looked at the alternative, making it shorter and wider, but that creates an extensive construction project that would be cost prohibitive at this point.
And either way you'd get, and, and as it's configured now, with moving the runways, we can get all, fields for all of the sports we play on fields. Well, field hockey, we're never talking about doing on this field.
On Upper Downs.
As a Dallas, right.
No, 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 I, absolutely, I would say you absolutely would play some field hockey competitions on, on turf, on the artificial turf.
Currently, it's Upper Downs. That field fits within the common legislative regulations.
It's, it's small, it's smaller than the others. What's the, the biggest fields are men's lacrosse and soccer?
Soccer hasn't been much of a match.
And is the football field longer than those, or just, even with the end zones?
Longer than soccer.
Narrow and longer.
Narrow and longer, right. Yeah. Um, and where are we putting the, and, and the runway we're talking about is used for the pole vault and the-
And the triple jump, I guess?
And there's a separate, is there a separate runway for the long jump?
You can actually see it on that slide, you see where it ran across the bank.
That's not our field.
No, but you can- That is not what we're talking about.
Oh, uh, over, that-
Is it? It, it would go behind soccer or, or football goalposts.
Okay, both, both, the long jump, would be two separate runways then?
One run.
Or, long jump and?
One runway.
We currently have two runways for a long triple jump and a runway for a pole vault there.
Yeah.
So depending on how much we can get into that D zone, you may be, you're going to do one runway for a long triple, and one runway for a pole vault.
Okay. But we'd be able to do, right now, we do all of track and field on that field, including shot put and javelin, but we'd be moving that, or no?
Shot put and discus we do on the field right now.
Discus.
Discus. Shot put and discus run simultaneous on the Mizaros field. Javelin we do, and East Field, when it was open, and we really only do it for practice for bigger meets, it's not part of our regular competition, uh, nationals and the rest.
But we'd be moving those throwing events to East Field if we got an artificial turf field?
Certainly the shot put and the discus.
Yeah, because-
If you throw on the artificial, discus, you can actually throw on artificial.
Okay. Okay, but shot put just can't do, okay. All right, great, thank you. This is incredibly informative, I really appreciate it. I'm gonna, I'm sure I'm gonna come, I'll have more, I'm sure, over time, but I think other people probably have a lot on their minds, so.
I actually don't have any questions, other than to thank all of you guys for your hard work. This report actually answered a lot of my questions, and your presentation tonight did not raise any additional questions for me, so thank you.
Wow. I wasn't expecting that.
You're up quicker.
Get ready.
I'll take a five-minute break, then.
I actually just, I think I just have one question, and it's really for Tom, would you mind coming back to the mic, Tom? Because I'm sort of intrigued a little bit by the, the sort of issues that were a particular concern to the minority on the committee that were concerned about the environmental issues, and I guess, I'm wondering if the committee had in fact supported fully the idea of an organic turf, would that have been sufficient, and I'm talking about not the hybrid, but the full organic, would that have been sufficient to garner your support, or were there other concerns? There are still lingering concerns about a whole host of other things that would mean that you would.
I would say the latter. It clearly would have moved the needle.
Right.
And that is part of the reason that some of us felt so strongly, as between organic and hybrid infill, that organic was preferable. But as a practical matter, there are so many benefits that are touched on in the report, at least in summary fashion or identified in the report, to having a natural grass surface. It's not entirely about the bad things that are in artificial turf, it's in part about the benefits of natural turf, in terms of everything imaginable, from greenhouse gases to filtration of groundwater, to a whole host of things, the general cooling effect of trees and grass, and some of that is lost in the process, so it was also about that.
And since you're making a recommendation to the board, I guess there's part of the, there's part of that process where you're kind of sitting in our shoes, and given the fact that we have a math problem with fields, the fact that this analysis here says that we need seven grass fields, and at most, we're going to have four, I'm wondering how, you know, how do you, how do you think we should respond to that, knowing that, you know, yes, on all things being equal, we should all prefer grass as a natural solution, I wouldn't want to put synthetic turf on my lawn in the front of my house, so how do we deal with that math problem? Because that has always been the thing that has been the challenge for us as a board.
Well, it wasn't the sense, it wasn't our sense, that there would be a 75% shortfall in terms of what needed to be used, as opposed to what was available for use. I think some of the assumptions are based upon historical experience, where you're dealing with grass fields that have not been well engineered, that do not represent the current state of the art in terms of what would be built out, that are not properly drained, and part of it, I believe, is the fact that the number of playable days on synthetic turf that are used, at least in part for this analysis, because there are other figures that are used in other presentations, there are no absolutes. But as a practical matter, just to pick one, one of the things that troubled me was that almost entirely factored out of this analysis was snow and ice cover. Now, we heard a presentation by one of the sales reps for the artificial turf companies who said, "It's really very simple, you put a little plow out there with a rubber blade, and there's no harm done." But then, when you read the actual literature from the trade association that represents those businesses, and they're dealing there with all of the possible things that might result in a warranty being voided, and you look at that material, and it's a very interesting document, by the way, it's short, and the benefit of it, if you will, is that it gives full credence to those who believe very strongly that this is the preferable approach. But then, when you read through it, it talks about clearing snow, and most of all, clearing ice, from artificial turf fields, and it really doesn't support what we were told, again, by one person, not by a group of people. And it is interesting, because that apparently represents the best state of learning as far as that industry is concerned. So that really is only one point. There probably would be some downtime in the case of synthetic turf fields where there is significant rehabilitation that's involved, as opposed to day-to-day maintenance. According to that document, that needs to be done on a cycle of three to five years, so that means that that significant rehabilitation would need to be done two to three times over the course of the estimated lifespan, and it's not simply a process of an hour or two. It's a significant investment of time. So as I said, it's an interesting document, only because it is written by the folks who are advocates of synthetic turf fields, but nonetheless, it was written for a different purpose, not to sell them, but as a document that could then be used if a manufacturer said to a school district, "We're not going to stand behind that warranty because you didn't follow reasonable practices." So it really is written from the other point of view, and it is interesting, only, I'm not suggesting that those practices could not be followed with a proper program of maintenance, but I am suggesting that it, if followed, and particularly in the Northeast, and particularly looking at the winter that we've had and we're having, it, there are significant variations in terms of the assumptions that were made. I can't tell you what the right numbers are, I can simply tell you that it calls into question whether some of those numbers paint an overly optimistic picture.
I don't think so, some of those issues, we could actually ask some of our neighbors if they put the synthetic on the fields, if they've encountered, like some of the things you're saying. Have they, you know, have they used the plow, have that voided, you know, has that caused an issue with the turf?
But they would only know if it voided the warranty, if they had a warranty played with it.
They wouldn't know.
So what you're really dealing with, if you will, is a document that talks about best practices. If a school district failed to follow one of those practices, it does not necessarily mean that the warranty would be voided, but looking at, looking at that presentation, it at least suggests that there are other considerations that need to be weighed in the process.
I will forward to you the name Russell Rogers, who happens to be the athletic director at Stevens Institute of Technology, who every year at this time have to get their lacrosse teams and their field hockey teams and their baseball teams on the field, and they plow a field turf field that was put in 2009. They had the exact same lines on their fields, to my knowledge, they've never had a problem.
How often do we have snow cover? This has been a really.
I don't even think we're, we've never even talked about the issue of plowing, so.
It's not common.
I mean, it's, this has been the most, the snowiest period that I think I've ever experienced in everything for 15 years.
I think the conversation that the committee really focused on, and I don't think there was a lot of discussion in and around the plowing, and I think the one comment that came up, and it wasn't a matter of full-fledged conversation, Artie was able to share that a lot of the local districts were not going to plow their fields because of the ice and concern about potentially damaging them. I think our focus hasn't necessarily been about the snow cover, it's been about rainfall and wet fields, so we look at the next week with 50-degree weather and a rainstorm on Wednesday, there's that prospect that we could get rid of a lot of the snow, but then, if that was artificial turf, I think is the point that we're saying that there'd be that opportunity to play on the field immediately, but our fields will probably still have to sit for a couple weeks before we can play on them, because they're going to be so saturated.
Versus, versus an artificial turf where you can use it as soon as the snow is gone.
I think that's where our conversation on weather was.
All you have to do is look at Memorial Field, it's still covered in snow, once the snow is gone, you've got, I don't know, two weeks before they can, two weeks before they can actually get on it.
I think no one, no one is going to debate the fact that the current field cannot possibly handle the melt, the snow melt, and a substantial rainstorm. I think the question might be reasonably that if we had a different grass field with better drainage, that field would perhaps.
Be better.
Better, right, it wouldn't be as seamless as synthetic turf, but it would be better than what we have today.
If we actually compared it, it would be seamless.
You might actually, you might actually get the full 700 hours.
Yeah, so just a question for Dr. Harrison, thanks, Tom, for that. The cost difference between professional turf guys and what we have today, is that something that we need to be factoring in here? And I would also say, now that, you know, we had this conversation about the additional work, do we have the personnel to be doing this, to, you know, to groom the artificial turf field? Because we seem to be maxed out, you know, in a lot of different ways with our custodial staff, and so is that something that we should be thinking about as a board, as a consideration, once we get to 2016, 17?
So to think about, and that's one of the things to consider, that if we're talking about long-range maintenance, those are costs that must be built into the budget, and if we're going to make a commitment, it's, you know, we want to have them outlined in a document and maybe approved by board resolution, so they live beyond all of us and our roles to make sure these investments are protected. But with that said, our, I certainly don't want to speak negatively about our staff, they work the best they can with the equipment they have and the time they have. I think the recommendation from the committee to outsource natural turf maintenance for East Field was given for a reason, because we're concerned about limitations and stresses on their time. If we look at the analysis, the annual cost, Rich spoke to vendors that perform this type of work, talked to other school districts that do this, and we're looking at a range, and again, these are conservative figures that we've said, but probably looking at today's dollar, around that $25,000 mark, to provide that level of service. And that wouldn't be cutting the grass, that wouldn't be lining the field, but that would be looking at top dressing fields, seeding fields, the different degrees of aeration that's occurring, and fertilization. So to run an extensive program throughout the course of the year, we'd be in the neighborhood of that $20,000, $25,000.
For the natural?
For a natural field.
The artificial, you're saying it's only an additional $1,000?
The large, and that's, and the large majority of that is purchasing additional infill material, and Rich, is it once a year, we have to have someone come in and do the extensive grooming?
There's a typical program that the outside vendors offer. It requires three or four visits throughout the course of the year to do the aeration, to lift up or aerate the material of your infill, and to groom it, to clean it, and they do that standard program. I have other clients, some do it in-house, some do it through outside vendors. You do have the option to do either. As Dr. Harrison said, it's a function of all the things you're asking your staff to do, versus saying, "Let's pull this task off and hire somebody to do it." They use essentially the same equipment. In the artificial turf scenario, the equipment that you need to groom it is typically part of that initial purchase. It's equipment, I always call it as farm equipment that's been customized for this product. You know, it's core aerators, it's rakes, it's brooms, things of that nature that they use.
Zamboni for artificial turf.
Excuse me?
Zamboni for artificial turf.
Actually, it's, it's a trailer that gets pulled behind a golf cart, you know, that's the size vehicle you need.
So is the $6,000 sufficient to cover what you just described?
But does that outside vendor cost?
Outside vendor.
And that's $6,000.
That's a $6,000.
That is a $6,000.
I know one right now is paying $4,500, plus your in-house time, $6,000, I think, is a fair number.
And the equipment, what we purchase the equipment when the field is installed, typically that.
That's in the initial construction cost.
That's in the initial construction cost?
Right.
I'd just like to make a comment about maintenance for the East Field.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Ann Atkinson, I was part of the committee, and part of the minority of the committee, just to go on record. But one of the things that Dr. Harrison told us during our meetings, which I think is important to remind him to, again, is that the East Field is slightly different than maybe any other field, because it's going to be under a DEC mandate, and so it has to have grass on it at all times. So it can't be allowed to turn into a muddy mess, it has to be maintained. So for that particular field, and under the particular circumstances, maintenance is a very serious issue.
And, 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 Ann, thank you for that reminder, and it's absolutely a part of the plan for, where we would receive approval from DEC for the proposed resolution that I introduced earlier, would be that there would be a required maintenance plan, that we could not allow that field to go into disrepair. And certainly, a part of that design is the drainage to deal with the maintenance of the field, but there would be requirements for visual inspection and appropriate maintenance protocols to ensure that that soil cap remains intact, and if we were to have a field where the grass turf was to be not cared for, not properly maintained, and it would become deteriorated, well, then we'd be compromising the integrity of the cap because of the wear.
So the good news is, we have to keep East Field in good shape.
Hence the $25,000 cost.
Well, that is on cost, East Field, that's.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
I'll be quick, a couple of, I think my questions are pretty specific. I have a question about the track surface. You mentioned that it needs to be an all-weather, all-weather impermeable surface, and I guess my question is, wouldn't a permeable surface be better in terms of water and drainage?
I don't think so. Track surfaces, some are laid down that are actually permeable, and the water percolates through that rubber surface and then follows the asphalt underneath, so when you get freeze-staw cycles, that leads to a separation of the materials, where a permeable, impermeable surface allows the water to flow off the surface of the track, so you're less likely to have that separation.
So we'll go the piping to accommodate the water runoff from the track?
No, it's not piping, I'm talking the track surface.
The drainage, I'm sorry. I meant the drainage, I didn't mean piping.
The turf will be on an angle in towards the field, so all the water will run into the field, and then be captured.
And then it'll run into the drainage, okay.
This surface that I'm showing you, in some scenarios, in some scenarios, the rainwater would actually vertically go through that. What I'm recommending is a impervious surface, so the water flows off it, so you don't get that saturation of the base mat.
Control the water more essentially by telling it to go where we want to go, instead of letting it control where it goes.
Instead of letting it go through the track surface itself.
But if we're talking about asphalt, and you're not, you don't have any option.
You're mixing the two subjects. We're talking about the track surface, the rubberized surface. There are rubberized surfaces that are intended to allow the water to flow vertically through the rubber, to the asphalt, and follow the asphalt to the drainage system.
Okay.
Then there are track surfaces, the rubber surface itself, that are intended to be impervious and force the water to dissipate quicker.
That's what you recommended.
Right, it doesn't have anything to do with the underlying asphalt surface or the drainage that you're directing it to. To answer your question directly is, the surface itself, the rubber is different.
There's a few things mentioned in the proposals, such as lacrosse netting, bleachers, I just wanted to get a sense of, were all of those things factored in these numbers? Because I know some of these things in the past, we've looked at.
In the report, it was very, it broke it down pretty well. I think what you're looking at, not in the presentation today, but.
No, it isn't.
In the report.
Well, I didn't see numbers associated with it. You talked in, you know, in the text about these things would be nice and these things would be great, so I was just curious, when we're looking at the cost of this bond, to what degree do you, what exactly is included in those numbers?
So those specifics weren't, what we have built into the cost would be new field goals, so you'd have contemporary field goals that would be included for football, we have included new soccer goals. The option could be had that rather than purchasing soccer goals, since we already have existing goals, that you may look to purchase some other equipment, but we do not have costing at this point for bleachers. Quite honestly, there may have to be some engineering work, because you look at the pitch of the hill, you just can't set sets of aluminum bleachers, because you get a few people on them, they're going to tumble down the hill. So there's going to have to be some design work for that consideration, but the lacrosse netting is relatively affordable, and those are things that we could either build into the cost or build into an operation.
Is there any reason?
I'm sorry.
Is there any reason we have to do the bleachers now, as opposed to, there's nothing in the bleacher construction that would need to be in at the same time?
To balance that, we do have construction cost contingencies in there, so we do have some contingency money that, if we have favorable bids, I mean, these numbers are pre-designed. We haven't designed it fully, we haven't gotten quotes from contractors, so we've built in some contingencies, and if there's monies available for this project or any of the projects that you're talking about, for the fields or the Buildings and Grounds Committee projects, you have opportunities to do some, add alternates, some extras.
Well, that was my next question, which is, you said, Chris had mentioned that there was 10 to 15% contingency built into these numbers, are they just inherent in all the numbers, because there's not a line item anywhere that says contingency?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, there is.
General conditions.
Oh, I missed that, okay.
So for example, at East Field, it's a hundred.
And it's on.
Okay, okay, there you go, thank you, I didn't see that, okay. So is it possible for us? So, is it possible for us to get a list of, like, what's included in these costs versus what is mentioned in their recommendations that's not included and the affiliated costs? And just, I mean, if we're going to make a decision on the money, it would be necessary.
They are in this detailed list that the board has before. They, those items are listed. There are a few items that are not as far as bleachers, the lacrosse netting. So, there are a couple of other items that we will price and bring back.
Right in here, under equipment, there's three things mentioned.
Yep, so we have, if you look on Mizarro's football goalposts, we're looking at soccer goals and lacrosse goals were included in the equipment.
So, that's there.
Yes, for Eastfield, there were soccer goals, a backstop because the committee felt it important to have a backstop there to be able to have some practice area, but not have a pitcher's mound or a clay infield. But to have that there, and not only that open up opportunities for our own teams' practice, some prospect for community sports, and then the equipment and setup for shot put, discus, and javelin.
Is that the cost of, no, that's just putting the equipment up there because that's where they're going to have the cost. Okay. Yeah, I mean, is it possible to get a list of the other things, just so that we know?
There's only a few that would really have costs associated with them.
Essentially, we included, we included the equipment for the sports that the committee as a consensus intended to use or recommend those fields be used for. The things that they recommend as optional, like the bleachers is the primary one, the lacrosse netting is the other one. I think it's really only those two items that we don't have numbers for.
The only other thing to look at would be whether we have enough space for storage for the grooming equipment in the tower. If not, we'd need a price for a shed and probably the pour slab to put the shed.
So, we have, we'd have prices for all the maintenance.
And there's a thought, not only the practicality, making sure we have the space there, but I think it came into some of our maintenance discussion, the fact that if you don't stow your equipment immediately next to the field, the likelihood of performing that maintenance at the frequency that is desired, just by human nature diminishes because you have to haul it across the campus to bring equipment there. So, to be able to have everything you need next to the field would be a motivating factor, I think, for everybody involved.
Just so you know also, as far as the bleachers were concerned, I don't think there was a clear consensus as to the actual, you know, must-have. Frankly, there were some of us who felt that the uniqueness or charm, if you will, of the hill is, you know, that's Irvington. So, is it really needed? You guys decide.
It seems like lacrosse netting is a very good idea. If we're going to have track practice at the same time, we'd be in lacrosse.
Yeah, I think it's, that probably should be in the price of the baseball. Yeah, this should be in the price of the baseball.
Is it really only necessary at the ends of the fields, not on the sides? I mean, the crossballs?
When the ball's being heaved, it's going this way, that way, not this way, that way?
Hopefully, if the twos are any good, but, yeah.
You might get a rolling onto the track in the, you know, middle, but I don't, I think the, what you're really concerned is a full-speed shot.
General practice, you would have it at the end, behind the goal.
Where the goals are, right. Because that's.
That's where the ball's going at high velocity.
Right.
Right.
And once again, they call it lacrosse netting because that lacrosse ball's going to be, you know, a worse hit if you get hit by it than a soccer ball.
Yeah, right, I know.
At that distance, it's a long way from, you know, from the goal on a soccer, so the ball will slow down somewhat.
It's also just, it doesn't hurt as much.
I have a few more questions. You mentioned that the turf needs to be rested. In some of the documents, it said that you need to rest, like, the turf.
I think, I think the documents.
Say the turf needs to be rested two times, two days a year.
That was it, okay.
It overuses, it is a card.
Well, look, the more you use it, the more you have to, the more you have to fluff up the infill. That really is the bottom line. If you let it get compacted or, you know, and it speaks to the warranty, as Tom said, there are certain things that if you let that infill become impacted, you're going to affect your warranty.
Have we at all considered now that if we have turf on these fields, you know, the heat factor, but would we potentially look into a revenue generating opportunity in the summer by having the camp in and pay the district for use of the fields?
I think there would be certain prospect there, whether you host a soccer camp or something like that. Maybe there'd be a broader fundraising discussion.
Is this fundraising or is it just revenue?
Revenue, yeah, it's not really fundraising.
Or hand-to-hand.
It wouldn't be too hot, that field in summer?
What does it operate in?
Yeah, camps are usually in the morning, so probably not.
Well, I think generally speaking, if you're looking at the products that are, the committee's recommending, that it's going to be no different and potentially even cooler than grass in some sense.
Well, that is a good question. If you become the legislature online, you need to be trying to be a little more into the back of our artificial turf field, like you mentioned. So, to your point, there are certain communities that are susceptible to community that have that artificial turf, they need to run it along.
Yeah, but we help, we help to phrase some of the questions. Okay, I'm going to turn it over. Everyone left, but at this point, I guess I'd like to just open it up to the community if anyone in the audience has any questions or comments or suggestions they'd like to make. Anyone? Oh, I just said, I'm opening it up to the audience. If anyone has any comments, suggestions, or thoughts they want to share.
Much that to committee members, actually.
Yeah. Oh, we haven't heard it from a few committee members.
I was wondering, if you started out the field with the all-organic fill, could that be, and that didn't work out, could that be converted to a hybrid fill at some point?
More than likely, you'd be replacing the rug because as you remove the infill, you'd end up replacing the rug, which is the base. Essentially, the infill, now, if you had the opportunity to look in the back, the rug is essentially a two-and-a-half inch nap instead of the short nap you have on this rug and that infill as it goes in. As, if you tried to convert it, you'd probably destroy the rug and have to remove it all in total, you know? But the base underneath could be reused.
On that point, is the, are these products under a warranty so that if the organic doesn't work out, we have a warranty claim? I mean, are we, because we're talking about it being new and uncertain, but isn't it under a warranty?
Yeah, each of the manufacturers have a warranty, and I think Tom has brought to light some of the issues with the warranties and in, they're probably case-by-case scenarios, but.
Well, you don't want to violate the terms of the warranty, but what is, I mean, do we know what the warranties for the products are? Because that seems to be quite important.
Typical warranty for most of the manufacturers is eight years.
So, we're sort of guaranteed in terms of expenditures, eight years, or we're, you know, we get some money back, right?
If you maintain it to their requirements?
Well, which we're planning to do anyway. We think that's important anyway, right? So, that kind of reduces the risk of the organic, right, if it's under warranty.
I think the biggest cost with the organic is, and it's not that much different from the hybrid, is just the cost of adding the organic material to it to make sure you maintain the infill to a height that's recommended.
Yeah, but that, but that probably won't cost a lot more than doing it for the hybrid, do you think?
I don't think so.
Are we, when you're looking at facilities, that including upper dows at all or lower dows or no, not at all?
Field maintenance.
When you guys are looking at other facilities, you're not looking at other fields?
No.
No capital improvements for other fields?
No.
No, okay. So, right now, in all this, we have no money right now in any of this and the bonds for upper or lower dows.
I feel like we need to have a kind of a layout clearly what, because we're not obviously doing the, we don't know what proper maintenance for those, the dowslane fields would cost, but we need to have that on the table when we're talking about this and also as part of our budget discussions. Because if these fields aren't being properly maintained, we need to know what the costs of doing that are going to be.
May I answer that? I think the feeling was that the fields were maintained well before we had the problem with Eastfield. Eastfield then created a ripple-on effect such that upper and lower dows have deteriorated to the condition they're in today. But there was definitely a time when we had Eastfield as part of our fields, part of our four fields. Those two fields were certainly playable unless the weather turned exceptionally dry or exceptionally wet.
We had to expand upper dows to meet requirements for the poles.
Yeah. And is lower dows in terms of its configuration, is there any thought to changing that or is that just kind of what it is?
Strictly a practice field based on what we have in terms of how is the volume of the.
Yeah, and that's heavily used for ASO, I know, but.
So, John, is there a specific, I don't know if you have a question there, I walk by knowing.
Well, I think what my, well, it's a two-part question then. What if anything, given that the dowslane fields have deteriorated a lot, do we have one-time expenditures, we'll need to get them back into the proper playing condition once we get Eastfield back online?
Thank you for echoing our concern as well.
Yeah, but we ought to, we ought to know what that is, what it's going to take, because it's part of the equation, right? We want to have, want to have good fields.
That I agree with 100%.
Yeah, okay, good.
But it will take a while for, even if things go through as proposed, upper dows is heavily used so greatly. Because Eastfield is going to be out of condition for.
We're talking until 2017, I think, right?
A year to two years.
More than that.
Another thing, John, to keep in mind, we have an ASO, which is a family on the upper and lower dows. According to the data, there's always certainly two that will send these fields to the park to be accessed. It's a field that is far removed from the general public area. Dows do trouble because it is the central location of the main parking lot, so it remains with so many parents coming every hour on the dows. So, Eastfield, the lawn is coming back, it's not just in the area, the lawn is what's on.
But I thought the overuse more had to do with the fact that we had middle school and high school teams on the dowslane fields that used to practice on, I don't know which sports those are.
That's exactly true.
But that's, I mean, the dows, these ASO, these little, cute little ASO kids didn't really tear up the field that badly, I think, but.
I think the report does not show, it says dowslane lower is actually, I would say, in correction, dowslane lower field is actually the worst shape in dowslane. I don't think just during the first season, there was five little rounds of dowslane. And so, the readers were.
A dustball.
Yeah, and not to mention whatever, I don't know if that field gets used for recess, but that's also a consideration.
I think that is a recess field.
Well, that and the playground above it.
I just wanted to make another comment about maintenance. I think that there's probably no doubt that more usage of those fields, because Eastfield got closed, can, could have exacerbated problems that might have existed. But as Rich said earlier, you need to understand that it's a, there's a complicated equation that has a lot of things in it, like the soil. That's the number one thing. The next thing is the type of grass. So, at this point, there's a website you can go to that tells you exactly the best mix of grass seed to put in our area for a sports field. I'm sure that when the grass seed was put on these fields 30 years ago, there was a very limited spectrum of what you could use. Now, there's a whole industry geared towards optimizing grass seed for root depth and speed of germination and so forth. Then you have irrigation, so grass seed has to be kept moist during when it's supposed to be germinating. And if it isn't, then it will germinate properly and there will be bare spots. You're supposed to overseed that if the irrigation isn't working and it gets dry, then you get dust. So, I think it is, I don't want to know anything about the people who've been taking care of the field, but I think that the state that they're in proves that they've not been maintained properly. It's not just that Eastfield closed. And so, when you do your maintenance calculus, you need to realize that it's more than just mowing the lawn every Monday. Maybe you don't, maybe you can't even mow it once a week because it's too wet, but you go on it anyway because that's your schedule. That's not good maintenance.
But I just feel like we need to have a clear picture of what we need to do to those fields to get them back, what it's going to cost, what our plans are going to be.
And I think there's two steps.
It can't be something we just kick down the road.
I think there's two steps. What we can do to better maintain them until Eastfield and Mizarro's are resolved and then ultimately what the maintenance program becomes. And I have to say, from experience and to Ann's point, each of our fields, we overseed, we aerate, we do those things. However, only two of our fields have any kind of irrigation on them. And that when we are down on lower dows, we try seeding down there. The struggle that we have is irrigation because we probably, what we would need to do is to run some water lines out to the field and then doing so, set up some area sprinklers, one of the track sprinklers or something. Because by the time, we try, but by the time the water pressure gets all the way out there and hoses, it trickles out and the impact is minimal. So, I think there's probably a two-step approach.
Well, don't we need to be?
From in the big picture.
Yeah, so part of, then part of the equation is, upper dows irrigated? So, don't, then part of the question is, what do we have to do for irrigation on lower dowslane? If that's what we, if that's what's needed, it's what's needed.
And I also think, I guess the more immediate question is, do we need to look at this budget that we're currently discussing? Look at the maintenance line in the budget for dows upper and lower since those will effectively might be our only two fields for a while and is that, is that the right amount of money in there to support our needs over the next two years, certainly through next year?
Yeah, and, you know, on that also, we talked in the budget of maybe putting in, considering adding to this year's budget some more one-off maintenance items and, you know, some of the stuff like irrigation could go in, could go in the budget.
A very good resource in the village with, the rec department has a, you know, someone on staff that does a tremendous job with all the village fields, including Sina Hudson. So, there is a resource there that you can go to, you know, to speak to them. He's an arborist, he, you know, he knows what he's doing and he has actually collaborated with the people here on, in, at the high school, certainly about, you know, how to mix your seeds and everything else. So, I would use him, frankly.
I have a question. Artie, is the intention that field hockey eventually move if there was an artificial turf? Because that's one of the sports that really beats up on natural turf. It creates those divots and pockets of missing dirt and grass.
Obviously, you know, there's going to be a competition field that's going to have soccer, delante football in the fall, so you'd have to schedule them in, have the games, practice on grass and play on turf, but not time to play on turf if you can use it, ideally play on turf.
Is the wear and tear more on the games than on the practice for field hockey?
I would say every day, you know, taking difference with the shots. I would also caution that when you look at dowslane upper field, eventually after, you know, a couple of more seasons, it's going to go downhill based on what we have on there right now, and we're not going to have Eastfield for a time. That when you go and put Eastfield back in, you're really going to need to rest upper dows more so than just the summer. If nothing grows in the summer, you're going to have to rest more and you need to be very careful about how much you remove of Eastfield. And we're talking about the four different things that.
If, in fact, that was the ultimate goal, you need to know that before you order the turf because the lines are inherent in the rug. So, you need to know ahead of time.
Well, I was, so once you order, you can't change the lines?
Well, you can, you can throw down a paint, but you don't want to paint your turf. You can, but you don't want.
But you can't get rid of the lines that are there.
That's correct. They're, they're actually woven into the, either glued in or woven into the overall rug.
I think there's some considerations there that we would want to talk with the engineers and because the more lines you get, you put on a field, one, from a competition standpoint, it gets a little confusing. But secondly, if you're dealing with a field with many, many seams, you're introducing more weaknesses potentially in the carpeting. So, you know, it's not uncommon though to see a field that would be lined for, say, three sports at a maximum, and this, you know, you could say it would be lacrosse, soccer, football. And then you would come in with an alternate color and you would physically paint on lines for field hockey in a different color. And then as they wore off, you would repaint them, which is common practice even at the collegiate level.
Okay, and I guess to people who might be watching, if anyone has any questions, as we said at the beginning of the meeting, very short time frame we're looking at, there's a meeting on Thursday, the 13th, and then a meeting on Thursday, the 20th, with the board to make the decision as to what, if anything, we would adopt for the referendum in the fall. So, please email, call, get in touch with whomever. So please email, call, get in touch with whomever on the board or the administration, and let your voices be heard, because we really need it quickly and in a short timeframe.
Can I, can you just clarify that on the 20th, we're deciding about east field?
Yes, east field.
Right, not necessarily synthetic turf versus natural turf?
East field at minimum, and if possible, if we can make a broader decision, I think it would be, there'd be value to it.
Okay.
Because even if we don't, I think we don't have that much more time.
We realistically don't. We need to look ideally, have a decision made on the total scope of everything in May. But you have to think, the sooner we make decisions, the more accurate numbers we're going to have, because we're, land is designing all of these projects. And the more time they have, I think.
I'd appreciate more time.
Yeah.
And SED has a long window.
SED is a concern.
Yeah.
SED has to approve everything from a.
There's currently a backlog at SED, the process is lengthy. So the sooner you get it in, the sooner they always bother.
It's not getting shorter, that would be. Before you do that, I just want to say, I just want to say one thing. A lot of hours went into this, and I appreciate you listening to us, but I must say, this particular document, the actual report, was put together by Deb Hargraves, and I don't know how, there's enough hours in a day to do what she did. And forget about the count, I mean, Chris as well, in the edits and the changes, and all for a very good reason, short amount of time, but I got to tell you, she did an unbelievable job and put this whole thing together.
I agree, and again, you know, Deb, thank you so much. This is my third time going to fields on the board, and I must say, because of all this, this is certainly going to be the easiest for me as a board member and the most pleasant. So thank you personally, and also on behalf of the board, and also to all of you on the committee. I mean, this is really incredible, and we so appreciate it, we really do.
Good group of people.
Motion, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Favor?
Aye.
Not quite 10 o'clock?
Thank you, everybody.